To executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, A, executive assistant employment contract and job description, and B, administrative assistant employment contract and job description.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for votes, Selectmen Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchia goes an aye, and we will be returning to open session.
Good.
It is March 16th, it's about 6:50. This meeting is being recorded. Hopefully it's live on Channel 9, and it's also going to be uploaded on YouTube. And for those of you who are watching on TV and you wish to join us via Zoom, let me give you the information. The meeting ID number is 891-7429-7800. Again, I'll repeat, the meeting ID number is 891-7429-7800, and the passcode is 043071. Again, it's 043071. I would ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Since our last meeting, we have one individual who has passed. It was the brother of librarian Joshelyn Tavarez. Derek A. Mikhailwitz, 45, of Westport, passed away on Saturday, March 12. He was the husband of Tamara Gendro Mikhailwitz, and the brother of Dyton librarian Joshelyn Tavarez. This time, I ask for a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. For those that don't know it, this is Women's History Month, National Women's History Month, so I'll read the proclamation. Whereas National Women's History Month traces its roots to March 8, 1857, when women from various New York City factories staged a protest over poor working conditions, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, peace movement, and more that aim to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the homes, and whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, for the town of Dyton to hereby proclaim March 2021 to be Women's History Month, and urge all of the citizens of the town of Dyton to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in the observance. Signed by Kenneth Pacico, chairman, Leonard Howell, cleric, and Dr. Brett Segraffas, member. Entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Women's History Month proclamation as presented this evening.
Second. Any discussion? Hopefully, there isn't any. I'll call for votes. Selectmen Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchia goes an aye. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is Bill and Commissioner. He's going to talk about some foyer renovations at the Town Hall.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Dyton. I actually, I'm going to scale back a little bit in the, to try to save time, especially with all the budgets on tonight. I have not finalized the renovation plans for the foyer. However, in order to proceed, I need a little more room in the foyer. So I did not act arbitrarily. I conferred with the Veterans Officer, Ray Hague, first, and we'd like to propose moving the POW Chair from the foyer of Town Hall and bring it here to Old Town Hall. And in doing so, it's going to open up some wall space for me. I want to create a small waiting area for people waiting to see the Selectmen or the Town Administrator, and then the rest of the plan will be revealed at a later date. But for now, that's really all the support we're looking for. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Hague, but he has a plan for that if the Selectmen so choose to support it.
It's my understanding, Mr. Hague, that you've formed a committee that's going to discuss the possibility of moving that, the Chair, and bringing it over here, and where to place it over here. Is that correct?
We have. We're going to have Don Hershey, Colonel Perry, myself, and of course Jim, who's doing work over there. And that's the plan to bring it over, but we still want to get an idea of how everybody feels about it, so it's going to be a little bit of a feasibility and then implementation. So we could let you know. I think that's where we're at with that. And the plan is to put it back here, and we would have a rededication ceremony along with it because of the significance of the Chair, and we would have the original group that gave us the Chair attend that and rededicate it. That's the plan.
Yeah, I know I've spoken to Mr. Hague as well as you, and I've expressed my support for moving that, so. Does the Board have any questions?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
If not, entertain the motion then to allow the movement of the MIA Chair to be moved over to Old Town Hall from Town Hall.
Some moves.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchia goes an aye. So thank you for bringing that to our table.
Thank you, Mr. Hague.
I know you both are going to stick around because you're budget items. The next agenda item is, we have a meeting with our school committee as well as the Board of Selectmen to choose our, to appoint a new school committee member. I would ask first if, I'm not sure if that's correct pronunciation of your name. Is it Alice? Elise Vincent, if you want to come up to the microphone here and just give us a brief statement as to why you have an interest in this position?
Good evening. I am interested in joining the school committee because I, I've lived here for 20 years. I'm very nervous.
It's okay.
And I haven't really paid attention to town politics. So I started going to meetings in June, and I noticed nobody really goes to meetings, and I thought that I would like to get involved. By the time I was going to join a committee, it was too late. So there was a seat open in the seat, in the school committee, and I thought, well, that's the one. So I put my resume in, and I, I went for it. My parents were teachers, my husband's parents were teachers. I've got many teachers, and I have a soft spot for the school system and the education, and I'm very proud of our education in Massachusetts. And that's my reason.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes.
Just so you know, as well as Mr. Andre, we have some questions that we'll be asking you. I'm going to let Mr. Andre obviously speak to us and the school committee. And then I have six questions I'm going to ask that we've asked prior, last time we appointed a school committee member.
Okay.
Then I'm going to ask the Board if they have any questions or any concerns, as well as the school committee. Okay?
Okay.
So you can have a seat. If you want to just sit over there, because you might be going back and forth, if you don't mind.
Okay, all right.
And Mr. Andre.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen, school committee members. Thank you for inviting me today to your meeting. I agree that the resignation of a school committee member or any other official is difficult because it's an unplanned and unexpected event. So when I became aware that Mr. O'Connor had submitted his resignation, I thought that I would be in a good position to help the town out, to step up, previously serving on the school committee. I brought my binder with me today. I feel like I can jump right in and be ready, willing and able to help meet some of the really difficult challenges that the committee has, you know, with negotiations, litigation, new superintendent starting in July. And I feel I'm really well qualified to do that, and I can start really immediately. So I've submitted to you a list of qualifications that you have seen and might be aware of. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have now or as part of the six, the six questions.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask the six questions, but first of all, I just want to thank both of you for applying for this. As, you know, it's, it's going to take, it's time consuming, it's a very important committee that we have here in our town. Obviously, our students are very important. Our family members are very important. So appreciate the fact that you both have an interest in. So they're not trick questions, but let me ask them. I think you've already answered the first question, but if you want to add to it, then that's fine. First question is, tell us about yourself and your interest in serving on the school committee. Can you both agree that you've, you basically kind of answered that question? Do you want to add anything to it? Okay, thank you. Second question is, why did you choose to apply for the school committee instead of getting involved in another Board or Commission? So I'll start with you first, and then Chris, if you could answer that.
Well, the school committee was beyond the committee that had no reason. I just really didn't come out to be part of the town. And when I saw the school committee, I, I, my parents were, I grew up at a school in the back of college. My dad was a professor and my mom taught middle school. I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to be on a committee. And it's probably not a good reason, but I, I think I would like to help. This, the schools need some help right now. There's a lot of, a lot of issues going on that couldn't use some attention.
Thank you.
Just one thing, Mr. Joe, like if you, so if we could have everyone actually come up to the podium, because the audio is difficult for Mr. Jefferson to hear as well.
I totally forgot about the Zoom.
Is this microphone okay or no?
Well, it would be both, right?
Yeah, it would be both for Mr. Jefferson.
One is for Zoom and one's for the.
Yeah, on Zoom as well.
So it won't work if I.
So, no, the cord's not long enough.
Is that going to wheel? Oh, no, that's the maximum it goes. I thought it used to go further.
Get higher.
Ms. Vincent, you want to come up to the microphone again and repeat your answer? You don't have to. I don't know if Glenn, you think Glenn didn't hear that?
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear. I had the television on too, so it's going to sound like.
I don't want to put any pressure on you. Mr. Andre, from now on, we're going to have to come up to the microphone and answer any questions.
Get my steps in tonight. What was the question again, if you don't mind me asking?
Sure. Why did you choose to apply for the school committee instead of getting involved in another Board or Commission?
Yeah, great question. You know, as you may or may not know, I have actually been involved in several committees in the town. I served in the Finance Committee, served in the School Committee in the past. I, I worked with the DR Regionalization Study Committee for a amount of time. I'd be happy to get involved in other town activities. I think that, like I mentioned earlier, I feel that I'm really qualified to step in at this really difficult time and bring a lot of experience to the, to the group. As she mentioned, you know, we have a passion to, to do this. You know, my, my sons both graduated from DR, and I've been here for about 30 years, so similar. You know, when you first roll into town, you're kind of like, yep, I pay my taxes, I do my things, and then as things get more serious and you start paying more close attention, you realize that your voice has to be heard, whether it's coming to a town meeting, coming to a Selectman meeting, voting for positions. And so I feel really engaged in all those things, although I have to admit, this is the first time I've been up here for a meeting, so thank you for inviting me. So that, that's why I'm interested in joining the school committee at this time.
Thank you. So Mr. Andre, why don't you just stay there? I'll ask the next question while you guys won't have to. You'll get your steps in, but not as soon as you can. So this is going to be for you, Mr. Andre. I'm also going to ask you, Ms. Vincent, define our community as it relates to both the Town of Dyton and the DR Regional School District.
Yeah, it's a great question. I think sometimes there's a lot of confusion about that. But the main point is that, you know, the DR Regional School District is a, is a district of the towns of Dyton and Rehoboth, and the school committee is its, its governing body. So it's really important that, you know, school committee members, whether they elected from Dyton or from Rehoboth, really are looking forward to the educational opportunities of all the students of, of the entire district. And I, I take that, that matter very seriously. That's not to say that we don't come with our own opinions and thoughts and positions. You know, our two towns are very different in a lot of different ways. But, and I, I like to think that I can understand some of the dynamics of the town of Rehoboth, which helps me in voting and deliberating with the committee. So, so I think that's the answer to that question.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Define our community as it relates to both the Town of Dyton and the DR Regional School District.
Our community is a blue collar community, and we're a progressive community, and Rehoboth is a conservative committee. I think we have our differences, but we also have our common, our common needs. We both don't have industry. We both, we don't have a lot of money. I mean, we, we both need each other. We need to come together and work together to make our regional school work. It's very important that we work together, and that's my definition of our school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can, Ms. Vincent, I'll ask you the next question while you're still up there. What do you feel are the two biggest issues facing our schools?
Overcrowding and working with Rehoboth to, to make a fantastic school system together. We need to come to an agreement with each other. I don't think our differences are insurmountable. I think we can work together, and we can really create a good school system where we're happy and amicable.
Thank you. Mr. Andre, same question.
Yeah, first and foremost, my most important issue is educational achievement of the students. When I was on the committee, I, you know, towed a very hard line with trying to measure, you know, scores and student results in all of our schools across our different subgroups. And when I, when I moved into this town 30 years ago, we were on par with Easton and a few other top-notch schools. Today, we're more in the middle of the range as far as student achievement. So I think first and foremost, the thing is student achievement. Hand in hand with that is budgeting, obviously. Budgeting has been a very difficult issue for, for this committee and for our communities, especially since Education Reform Act, we changed the statutory method, which really puts constraints on the amount of money that certain towns can, can spend. Prop 2.5 only allows the town to spend, to raise and appropriate 2.5% of their budget. Our committee budgets are sometimes, you know, 3, 4, 5, 8%, and obviously, that's a difficult way to sustain the district. So in my mind, student achievement and, and budgeting, and the availability of cash for the district are the two most important issues.
Thank you, while you're at the podium. The next question is, what is your experience in public finance and/or budgeting?
So as I mentioned earlier, you know, I was on the Dyton Financial Committee for, for a year, and I gained some great experience there. And, you know, over the seven or eight years that I served on the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School Committee, you know, I did participate actively in the budget formation, as well as town meetings to, you know, defend and present. And we've had public hearings on the budget, so the school committee budget is, as you've probably seen, is a significant amount. Hundreds of, hundreds of pages. I know in your recent cap package that I know you've got some budget things. If you look at the school committee budget, you know, it's, it's very difficult to navigate. But I do think it's important that the school committee uses like tools, like Excel and computers, and summarizes instead of just getting a book of 250 pages and say, oh, line, this line, the copy paper was $1.25, now it's $1.75. Why didn't you call that out, right? That's not really moving the needle on the budget process. So really budgeting and understanding from a comprehensive way how we can sustain the schools, the educational program, our career and tech program at the high school, are really some of the most important things that I look for when I'm managing the budget process.
Thank you for standing. Same question to you, Ms. Vincent.
My experience in budgeting is limited to my job. I work in film, and I'm a lead man in the set deck department, and often a construction coordinator for the construction department. And I, I have to do the budget for the entire department. I have to do the labor and the materials, and I have, I take this, the script, and I break down all the sets, and I see how much it costs, and then I have to keep to that budget. That is my budgeting experience.
Thank you. If you could remain there. The next question, Ms. Vincent. Next, the last, the next question, the last question that I have anyway, is do you have the time necessary to serve on the school committee and to fulfill the responsibilities involved in serving in this role?
Um, I, I do. I feel, my husband also works in film, and I can take off whenever I need. I have a very flexible schedule. If I was, if I was awarded this position, I would probably, day play. It's called day playing. Just take a day here and there. And I can do that indefinitely.
Thank you. Mr. Andre, the same question.
Yeah, it's probably a good question to start with, because I think that's a question that a lot of new people to the committee don't understand. They see that the committee does meetings on Tuesdays and Thursdays for a few hours, when really, that's just the tip of the iceberg with committees. There's subcommittees, there's negotiations, there's town meetings, there's meeting with the Boards of Selectmen, and finance committees, so much that goes into that. Fortunately, you know, because of the pandemic, I actually work remote now, so I actually work on Milk Street 24/7. So I can easily get from there to, to the school or wherever the offices are pretty, pretty quickly, versus in the past, I might be late because I was trying to get through Providence traffic or some to that effect. So right now, I am, you know, ready, willing, and able to participate in as many committees as needed if I was selected by the Board and by the school committee.
Thank you. So does the Board have any questions? Selectmen Hall, I thought you had a question or two.
Who you have come to the podium at this time? It's for both.
It's for both. You can ask them, and then whoever wants to come first can answer it, and then the second one.
Mr. Andre. Please explain your position in regards to Chapter 74 Vocational Education Funding for Dyton-Rehoboth Regional High School, and what you would like to see happen at DR regarding vocational education programming.
Yeah, like I mentioned in, in one of my statements, I'm a strong advocate for that vocational programming. You know, we saw recently the, the large proposal get passed for Bristol Plymouth, and they're going to completely modernize all of their programs. Unfortunately, there is this non-compete idea at the state where Dyton-Rehoboth can't compete in a specific program that doesn't already exist. If one of our local regional schools such as BP or Aggie decline our participation, and that actually happened to the district, we are moving into biomedical program, and Bristol Aggie said, no, 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 you can't do that. We, we might do that in the future. So I think it's important that we want increase in modernizing our current programs, you know, the auto woodworking, machine shop. I think there's a business program there. And, you know, those programs are good for us because they're not as resource intensive, right? I mean, auto probably is the most resource intensive, but, you know, we don't need to build a whole new school just to support those workshops. We have a lot of space there. What we need to do is spend some money to, to modernize and keep, keep the equipment current. As far as the Chapter 74 specifically, you know, that, that money is, is higher than the Chapter 70 money. So to the extent that we have students enrolled in that program, it benefits the whole student body and our whole budget process. So we really want to, you know, have the exploratory program where students can come in and decide whether or not that's a program they're interested in. If they are, really support, you know, their achievement and their success in vocational, technical education.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent? I'll repeat the question.
Thank you.
Please explain your position in regards to Chapter 74 Vocational Education Funding for Dyton-Rehoboth Regional High School, and what you would like to see happen at DR regarding vocational education programming.
I think the funding is very important. It's, it can be considerable amount of money. I think that we should rebuild the shops at DR, and we can ask BP to work with us on what shops we can put at DR, and there, and there can be shops that don't cost much money at all. Taunton High School is a good example of what you can do with that funding. There's innovation in early college. I, I saw that they had innovation on their, their programs. There's things that we can do that don't cost a lot of money, like Mr. Andre just said, like computer repair that they do at Taunton High School. I think it, it's a great avenue to rebuild our school with the funding. It can make it really great again. When my husband went to DR High School, it had the most amazing art program, and it really changed the trajectory of his life to what he does today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Dr. Z.
I think that really covered everything. I think they were really good questions.
I'd like, I'll turn to Minister for the questions. I didn't rate those questions, and I believe they came from the last.
So yeah, I want to thank the Board and the School Committee for three years ago, because we went back through the minutes, and those are the questions from them too, so.
So next, I'll ask Mr. Jefferson. Do you have any questions for either candidate?
He's muted. Oh.
I don't have any, no.
Okay, thank you. Does any school committee member have any questions?
I don't have, I don't have a question. Mr. Pacico asked my question, which was having the time to serve. And as we all stated, the work of any committee or board takes place behind the scenes, not at these, you know, monthly or bi-monthly meetings, but all of those various subcommittees and advisories and so forth. And to have a ten-member school committee, it's important that we have equal representation on these subcommittees. So I know sometimes when people are perhaps watching at home, or you're, you're not familiar with the entire process, it looks like those two meetings a month are basically what happens. But there's a great deal of work leading up to those two meetings a month. So the time commitment is something that I was interested in hearing the answer to. And you both did answer that. Thank you. And as in your profession, you do all the behind-the-scenes work for the sets and the, so that's the important work. What we see is the final production, but you do all that legwork to get us to that. So thank you for your responses.
Thank you. So whoever doesn't prevail, let me just say, and you can have a seat if you want. I think all, we have all the questions. There are a whole list of committees and commissions and boards that if you, you want to join, so that would be great. I'm not sure how we did it the last time. Did we, did we, each person just decide who they're going to support, or didn't, we didn't do it?
Someone made a motion, and I think both our bodies have to. I don't mean bodies, I mean the school, right, Mrs. Dick. I mean, the, both bodies have to vote, and it's a majority of the Dyton School Committee members and the Board of Selectmen.
That's how we did it.
Yep.
So does anyone on the Board want to make a motion?
I'm actually not going to make a motion, not because I actually think both candidates would serve the school committee and our students and our teachers great. I'm going to defer to the school committee on the motion, simply because it's who the school committee has to work with. I'm not passing the buck. But I think you know what you need on the school committee.
No pressure.
No pressure. Unless someone wants to make a motion up here.
I will step down and make a motion if that, if you guys don't feel comfortable.
Get that Roberts rules, rules the order out.
I'll step down and make a motion that we appoint Chris Andrade for the school committee. He has past experience, and one of the questions was on the budget. I just remember attending a meeting, and I haven't attended a lot of meetings, but you explained the whole budget process, which I thought was excellent presentation. So I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Second.
Glenn Beattie.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mrs. Brady, you're okay with, there were two people that chimed in at the same time?
Sorry.
We have a motion on the floor to select Mr. Christopher Andrade as the newest member of the Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School Committee to serve out the remaining term of Mr. Tom O'Connor. All those in favor?
I think we are to vote individually, just.
And I, I believe you, at this time. And I, I believe you, at this time, just point of order, I apologize. I think it's appropriate and the chairman has to ask if there are other nominations because other nominations may be made.
We do have Robert's Rules of Order, no. Is there any other nomination? If not, I'm going to call for a vote.
Is there discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. I would just like to thank both candidates for coming forward. It's not an easy thing to do. I was initially appointed to the school committee, so I've so through the same process. However, I was the only one at the time, so I didn't have to go up to the microphone and answer several questions. So I, I really appreciate your interest and coming forward. And I just think that at this time, because we are in the place we're at and budget talks are taking place, and Mr. Andrade does have the background of serving on the school committee, and he can hit the ground running at this point. That's the reason that I'm going to vote in the affirmative at this point. But thank you. And I hope that people are encouraged to continue to take a role in town.
Yes, Selectman Hall.
So I want to say this, and I mean it with all sincerity. I really appreciate, I can tell how much you care about the town, how much you care about the schools. So although I'm going to vote to appoint Mr. Andrade, I sincerely, sincerely hope, I remember when I was that person at my first meeting and I was scared to speak. It really takes a lot of guts. It takes a lot of passion. And I sincerely hope that you will be willing to give your time to some other committee or to the school committee in the future. And I mean that.
Selectman Hall?
This, excuse me, Mrs. Vincent, I echo the words of Dr. Sigapas. You know, we posted this position and only two applicants applied. This position is very important as we go forward. As it's been mentioned by both candidates, there are some major issues that the school committee will be resolving in a very short period of time within the year. They have a new superintendent coming on board. Mr. Andrade brings a lot of experience to the table. I want to thank you for your courage in applying. And I hope that you also, this will be an impetus for you to become more involved in the town and have the courage to put your name in for other positions. We certainly could use the help in many committees that we have vacancies in the town.
So because we're doing Zoom also, I'll ask for a roll call on this vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Cam Pacheco was an aye. Glenn Jefferson, how do you vote?
Yeah, I'm a baker, Chris.
Ms. Gutcher?
Aye.
Ms. Terry? And Ms. Dingus?
Aye.
So congratulations. You know the work that's involved in it. We meet twice a month also, but we have many, many more meetings than just, just these two meetings. So it's a lot of work, as you know. I really appreciate the fact that you applied, Ms. Vincent.
Thank you.
And I hope that you look into other committees and boards and you can get, get ahold of our, Ms. Brady, and she'll give you a list of the committees that we have. We have a lot of committees with vacancies, so. But it's a great way to get involved in, in the town. I got involved 22 years ago just by joining the zoning board of appeals. And I just have a love for, for the town, obviously, and sounds like you have also. And we would really appreciate you joining one of our committees or several committees. We have a couple of members next to you that have joined, recently have joined committees and groups. So it's, it's great that people are interested in coming to the town and volunteering. So thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
And Chris, good luck. Ms. Andrade?
And thank you also.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Public input, is there any public input? Anybody on Zoom for public input? If not, anybody in the audience, public input? The announcements, you want to read the announcements?
Yes, sure. There is a townwide parking ban in effect through April 1st, 2022. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. A reminder that open burning season is from January 15th through May 1st, between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. A $10 permit from Dyton Fire Rescue is required prior to any open burning. And I believe you can get your, I say this every time, you can get your burning permit online at dytonfire.com. The Dyton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next at 8:00 AM on Saturday, March 19th, 2022 at Town Hall Lower Level 979 Somerset Avenue. Do you mind reading this one?
Sure. The annual town election notice, the annual town election will be held at Dyton Elementary School on Saturday, April 9th, 2022 from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You might read the next one only because I remember that.
I will, yes. We're trading off. Upstairs, downstairs. Spring fundraiser for the Dyton Historical Society. Spring table centerpieces can be purchased at Arujo Farms at 1522 Williams Street on Sunday, April 10th, 2022. $40 per person and it includes all materials. Please call 508-669-6988 to pre-register. Thank you.
Thank you. Town administrators, report.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few quick things that I just wanted to bring the board and the public up to speed on. I'm just going to get out of this real, actually I'm going to. So the first thing, it's been talked, so through the leadership and under the leadership of Highway Superintendent Ferry, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of work and planning efforts over these last few years to plan for the roadway reconstruction of Main Street. That process is really hitting, it's, it's hitting the, it's hitting the public eye now, like where we are and, and where we are in the process. And over the last few months, Highway Superintendent Ferry has been working diligently with the Water District and Superintendent Clunin. And the public efforts of the project will actually be kicking off tomorrow night before, I'm sorry, that actually missed a bunch of pages in the scan. But the public efforts will be kicking off tomorrow night before the Conservation Commission meeting, which is here at Old Town Hall beginning at 7:00 PM. Like we're both Superintendent Ferry, we're both Superintendent Ferry and Superintendent Clunin. We'll be talking about the permitting of the project, the scope of the project and the timelines like for the Main Street reconstruction project, which will take place likely during the next 18 or so months. With an anticipated groundbreaking this coming summer. So the permitting process is beginning now with the Water District, especially at this point. So they can begin the water main replacement project. So with the bidding, with the public bidding to follow and then with the, you know, the shovel to page, shovels at the pavement later in the summer. And so there's really like an information and overview meeting with the Concom tomorrow night, which will be followed by a public hearing with the Concom again officially, with the butter, with the butter notifications, you know, and all the notifications through that process and sent in advance of the 20, of the April 21st meeting. And again, that is Thursday, April 21st. That will take place here at Old Town Hall at 7:00 PM. So I just wanted to share that with everybody.
You have a question?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were you going to move on from the reconstruction project? Sorry, I wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, no, yeah, you can ask a question.
Thank you, sorry. My question was, and I apologize if I don't recall this. Does this construction, or reconstruction actually, project, is it inclusive of sidewalks? Or is that a separate project? Is this just the road?
No, there will be sidewalk improvements on part, it's on part of Main Street as well. To be honest with you, I forget where the new ones starting start. So I saw that Superintendent Ferry discussed the particulars of that. Be, yes, but the project does include sidewalk improvements.
Thank you, sir.
Selectman Hall?
I just, just wanted to add, the upgrades to the existing sidewalks will be ADA compliant. The sidewalks from Elm Street to Williams will be on the northern, there'll be a sidewalk on the northern side all the way up to Williams.
Okay.
The project, based on the meeting that we had last Friday, would start on the east of the riverside and work up towards Williams. Mr. Ferry did say that he would need a winter for the ground to settle before they would pave it. So it's going to be, and I hope the people on Main Street understand that there's going to be a torn up road for 12, almost 18 months.
It's going to slow down, the speed is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Those complaints will go down for a little while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so just moving on quickly. So there have been a number of town officials who have been working with the Department of Conservation and Recreation and the Trails Committee. Whether trails presented to us in the town during the latter part of last year, they talked about the feasibility study grant that they've been awarded by the Taunton River Stewardship Council, like for the towns, for the towns portion of the Sweet Snore Trail. But DCR also owns a pretty, a pretty substantial portion as well. And the state, to the state's credit and thanks to the advocacy of Rep. Padad and Senator Pacheco, the Department of Conservation and Recreation there at the beginning stages of planning for improvements on the state portion of Sweet Snore as well. So as part of that kickoff, as part of that kickoff project, first of all, like for the state portion of Sweet Snore, oh, you know, any residents, like any residents in the area like of Somerset Ave, starting, starting at the end, actually starting down by Alice's and working, and actually working all the way up to Sandpaper Way. Like in the next week and a half, in the next week and a half, residents should expect, so should, so should expect to see surveys on state property. Oh, you, yeah, yeah, like notifications have gone out. So notifications will be and have gone out as part of that process as well. But as part, as part of the same process, DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, they're planning a listening session, which is, which is scheduled on Zoom for Tuesday, March 29th, like at 6:00 PM. Information about, excuse me, information about the listening session and all the Zoom details has already been shared on our town social media. And we're going to be posting it, actually on our town website as well. But I wanted to get that, that information out as well. We do, and I just want to make sure like I stay in the order. We do, and as, and as we updated the board in the latter part of the last calendar year, we did at the end of the last calendar year apply for a public health, a public health excellence grant through the Department of Public Health with the communities of Taunton, the city of Attleboro, the town, the town of North Attleboro and the towns of Rehoboth and Berkeley. And I'm very happy to say we were awarded the grant. It's a three-year grant. It's a three-year grant with the possibility of becoming a nine-year grant in the amount of $300,000 a year that would, that would be shared by the six communities. And the grant would be used to actually supplement our existing public health programs and infrastructure. So for example, as part of our grant application, which I have included in the packet, we, I, oh yeah, like actually like as part of the grant application which I included in the packet, we had, we had asked for funding to supplement our public health nursing program. We've asked for, for funding to be shared, to be shared between the six communities for inspections. And, and also for, and also for like, and also for like a shared epidemiologist. So like, like we found out a few weeks ago that we did, that the group which, which is being led by North Attleboro is a fiscal agent, we were awarded the grant. And the Board of Health approved the letter of commitment last week. So like we're kicking off the efforts now. It's a slow and steady process. We will have to, we will, we, under the leadership of North Attleboro, will be working to staff up and so forth. So this process will roll out, this process will roll out in the next few months. But so, so we're active in it and I worked with the city of Taunton to write the grant as well. So this is really exciting that, as I mentioned, we have the ability to, so we have the ability to really be a recipient of this funding for the next eight to nine years. So it's very exciting there and I'll keep everyone updated as we go forward.
So this doesn't cover services that we have now? This is going to give us additional services and.
Yes, like it supplements it. Oh yeah, so the services, so the services that we currently have through our health agent, through our office manager, through our office manager and public health nurse, now those will stay and the grant will supplement and augment those services.
Thank you. Dr. Z, you had your hand up?
Can you give, oh, thank you, okay, sorry. I didn't want to speak out of turn. Can you give like an example of what these new services would be?
Yep, so, so, yes, I can, so looking, it's going to evolve over time. But right now, for example, we know, so just as our, just as an example, that our health agent, based on his workload, has a challenge. So, so, so has an, has an occasional challenge keeping up with inspections. So, so the inspector that would be shared through this funding would be able to supplement, so would, so would be able to supplement and perform inspections here in town. The same, the same thing with, the same thing with public health nurses and epidemiology as well. One of the challenges we face, as we know as well, so is we face a housing challenge. So we face a housing challenge where we deal with, so where, so where we have residents who deal with hoarding issues and the like. Uh, yes. Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, so like the inspection services here would help in those type of efforts as well.
I have a little bit of a concern. And I don't know if it would be appropriate, once I explained, to ask for a motion. I think this is a wonderful grant. We have some budget issues coming down the road. And I want to make sure, because this would, could be tempting, to replace or supplant services.
Yeah, that's not the intent and it's not allowed.
It's not, so it's not, the grant does not allow that?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to make a motion to.
Yeah, yes, it specifically prohibits that.
So it's like, I'm sorry, it's expanding services?
Yeah, yeah, like it's supplementing on top of the base that already exists and we can't do anything with that base that exists though. The base that exists today is the base that exists.
See, I didn't read that, but I, I know how tempting that might be. But I'm glad that that is included in the grant.
Yes, and I made sure, yes.
Not replacing someone to save money.
Yes.
That the grant would be to support and, you know, add additional services.
And the grant itself says it, we're not allowed to regionalize, that's not the.
Yeah, yeah, this isn't a regionalization plan either, it's a shared services.
We have our current services and this is an additional services.
Yes. Yes, it, our Board of Health, hold on a sec, sorry. So like in the authority that the Board of Health has by statute would remain.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have one other update. I just want to provide really.
What? Counsel on Aging.
Oh yeah, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Okay, just, I just want to give the board an update that over the last few weeks, we've been going, we've been going through, as you know, a council on aging, executive director hiring process. We, we had 12 applicants that were screened. Five were interviewed, five were interviewed by a screening committee. Like, and four were interviewed by the Board of, and four were interviewed by the Board of Directors during a meeting earlier today. The Board of Directors of the Council on Aging at this point, they did, so they do have a recommendation. have a recommendation, like, yeah, like in the recommendation that, in the recommendation that they have made will become, will be coming before the board next week, so.
Right through that.
Yeah, yeah, they're excited about it, I think we're all gonna be excited about it, so we're proud to continue the process forward there. And I think that is all I.
I believe it is. Thank you for your report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry. I lose track going back and forth.
And thank you for the grant as well.
Yes.
No, thank you.
I know your work talking about. Selectman's report, I believe, Selectman Hall, you have a report?
The annual election for Water Commissioner at the Dayton Water District for the term of three years will be held on Monday, May 16th, from noon to 7:00 PM. It will be, the election will be held at the Dayton Water District Treatment Facility located at 192 Williams Street, North Dayton. Anyone wishing to be placed on the ballot must fill out a request to be placed on the ballot form. There's no, it's not like our town meetings where you have to go down and get signatures. A request to be placed on the ballot form at the Dayton Water District Office beginning March 2nd, 2022, and the deadline is April 4th, 2022, if anyone is interested in running for a Water Commissioner. The annual district meeting of the Water District will be held May 26, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other Selectman's reports? I don't have any. Next agenda item, old business, there's no old business, I believe, new business. Chief of Police Employment Contract Extension. What's before us, we voted on this in the executive session, and it's extending his contract, Chief McDonald's contract, to August 31st, 2022. Any questions on the contract?
No questions.
Please, Chief McDonald.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Yes, as you know, that I came up here last week, we had a meeting about it. I am looking to retire, of course, in sometime July, August, I don't know a date yet. Like I said, when I have that date, I will let you know for sure. I've worked for so many guys here, so many faces, so many Selectmen, I had good days, bad days, good years, bad years, whatever, but it all worked out well, and I just wanna say thank you.
Well, we appreciate your service to the town. We discussed at the executive session, I guess I can say, you know, about different chiefs that you work with, Chief Spratt, Chief Chico.
I did.
Chief Sanson.
Chief Sanson, yeah.
So you've worked for quite a few different chiefs.
Through the chiefs, yeah.
All different styles and everything else.
Everyone was different.
Everyone was different, but speaking for myself, and I think I can speak for the board and for the residents in our Dayton community, that we appreciate all the work that you've done for us, and it's always difficult, I know when I retired, it's always difficult, but things will work out, you'll, you'll enjoy retirement.
Thank you. And I also, you know, I've worked with two lieutenants, I can say, I can count on my finger how many lieutenants I worked with. I can't count how many guys I worked with, there were so many, two town administrators, they were great.
Yeah.
I can't say nothing good, you know, they were both fantastic, they, they were really good, they, they were very helpful.
You have a good reputation, I know that every time I've had to call you, and fortunately it hasn't been that many times, you've always responded to my phone calls and always given me the answers that I was seeking, so I really appreciate the work you've done for the town.
Thank you, thank you.
Selectman Hall.
Chief McDonald?
Yes.
You send a message to a lot of the young kids in Dayton. You've spent your whole life in Dayton.
I have.
You have given your all to this town, forty-four years as a police officer.
I have, I grew up in this town, I went to the schools in this town, been around here a long time.
Shows residents, especially the young people, what this town has to offer and what they can become if, they don't need to move out of town to make something of it.
It's a very good town.
It is.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Z?
So I'm not gonna get sappy with you, because I know how you are, but in all seriousness, I think we've been through it all together.
Yeah.
Haven't we?
We have.
Six years.
Yep.
Forty-three, forty-four years you've been here. I, I just wanna tell people who may not know, who may never have had to interact with the police for whatever reason, maybe you're lucky, but I, in all seriousness, I know how much you've contributed to the town behind the scenes. People may see you here at meetings, but they don't know how much work there is behind the scenes. We've had to, even in the brief time when we didn't have a town administrator, we, I probably called you every day, I'm pretty sure you were sick of hearing from me, but in all seriousness, I really respect you.
Thank you.
I don't say that about everybody. All our employees, yes.
Thank you.
But I really do respect you. I can't imagine working for the same employer for forty-four years. I think, to Selectman Hall's point, I do think that reflects well on the town as an employer, and just innumerable amount of contributions and time that you've given, your own time, just waving to the Pan Mass challengers like you do every year, you don't have to do that. Thank you. It really means a lot, and I really appreciate you.
And one other thing too, is the new building we got, I was in that old one for a long time. That was painful, let me tell you. When I first started, it was, it was, it was okay, but, but, but it was getting painful as the years went on, and once we moved into this building, it's best move we, you know, we made, and it's, it's fantastic, it was the best thing that happened.
The department's lucky to have an advocate like you.
Backing us for that too.
Absolutely.
Believe me.
A lot of it is you too, chief. It's leadership, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
You had your temporary police station for how many years?
Like, by thirty-eight?
I'll tell you, when they put those trailers in, that was, that was a, that was a plus. Made the building bigger, so wow, we got, we got, we got more room now.
And you gave us an, and you gave us the animal control office too, as well.
Yeah, we did, we gave you another building, and, no, that was, that was a big thing when we got those trailers, that was, we were all happy with that, and then, wow, that was, but, no, I thank you very much.
We thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm sure you won't be a stranger.
No.
Don't be.
So any more questions about the contract itself?
None, from me, Mr. Chairman.
Now, entertain a motion on the contract.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the Chief of Police Employment Contract, starting July 1st, 2022, and ending on August 31st, 2022.
I'm gonna second that, can I make a friendly amendment for the minutes?
Sure.
To ratify the extension, because we already did approve it, and I will second that.
Okay, with the amendment, yep.
Yep.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's a tough act to follow, chief. Meeting adjourned.
I'm gonna stay up here, 'cause the next thing, I believe, Town Administrator Mullins is gonna be talking about some things, so.
Yes, the next agenda item is the Public Department's Transition Planning Call for Consulting Services. We're talking about getting a consulting company to come in to interview the candidates for your replacement, and obviously it'll be brought back to the board.
Yes.
You've given us the whole, has everybody had the opportunity to take a look at it?
Yes.
I know I don't have any questions about this, but does any board member have any questions about what they're gonna be doing? Eventually, they'll, this consulting firm, it's my understanding, they'll also interview the board of Selectmen, so any questions that we may have or anything that we're seeking in the new police chief, we'll be able to give them that information.
Yeah, yeah, like, and one of the things to that end, so in talking with a consultant early this week, he hopes to be able to do those interviews with the board sometime over the next week or so, so, so that, so that way, at one of our upcoming meetings, so that way, at one of the up, so that way, at one of our upcoming meetings, we can, so like, yeah, so that way, like, so that way, at one of our upcoming meetings, we can come back and set and establish that the posting, yeah, I'm sorry, like, one of our upcoming meetings, we can come back, based on the conversations you'll have as a consultant, to propose the posting process and the requirements for posting, so like, and we can get that hopefully in the next few weeks, post it and advertise in accordance with how the board wants. So, yeah, like, we do expect this, so process to get underway quickly, so we can have a good and set transition between now and the summer.
So I guess my question is, I mean, we have a good idea as to when the chief is gonna be retiring, so we can post this now, because at the latest, this person would begin September 1st, I would assume?
Yeah, yeah, we can plan for the transition and all that, yes.
Anybody have any questions about this group, or?
I do have a question, but I don't know if right now is the appropriate time to ask, but I'll ask it anyway, and you don't have to answer if it's inappropriate. Just in, because we've had this happen with other positions that have opened up, elected and appointed during a budget season that was already in progress.
Yep.
How, if we don't know what we're gonna post in terms of salary range and all that, then how do we know what to put in for the budget? And I know that our chief right now will be here until maybe the end of August.
Yes, so, so the chief will be coming back next week to discuss his budget as well, but we're, so we're recommending in, so we're recommending in his budget that he proposes salary at a full year, so like, we have the flexibility to go forward and actually manage that appropriately.
And put a appropriate, like, range, and we can?
Yes.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Yeah, 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 that would give us really the maximum flexibility while we do our due diligence.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So entertain a motion if there's no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Police Chief Selection Technical Proposal from Public Safety Consultants LLC of Oxford, Mass. as presented this evening.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye. Thank you, chief.
I wanna thank town administrator too for getting that role, and he, as I talked to him, he was right, right on it, getting going on it, so.
Sounds like him.
Oh, yeah, he's good, but I wanna thank him for that too, so.
Thank you, sir.
Hopefully we have a good next couple of months, or whatever, how it's gonna be done, and it works out. I wanna thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I think it's a good idea to have an independent group do the interview, and then?
Yeah, thanks.
Come back to us with a recommendation, so I think that's a good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next agenda item is the Review and Discussing Act on the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Executive Assistance Employment Contract and Job Description. So we're changing some of the duties of our treasurer, and we're now talking about giving it to our executive assistant, and we, we've had financial consulting to give us some recommendations on this, but let me just read a quote from Chad Clark. "It's not the number of employees anymore that is driving the need for a human resources dedicated position, but the fact that having any sizable employee base spread among multiple unions and different department operations requires a centralized and focused management of this extremely key operational area of the town. Like in many towns, Dayton's human resource function is currently being administered through the treasurer's office and at times has either hamstrung the office or has caused inefficiencies in the human resources functions. Many of those others, other impacted towns are now creating a dedicated human resource position to be the operative expert. As many municipalities are finding that over time, human resources duties were slowly pushed onto treasurer's personnel who are not specifically trained or supported to perform such tasks at the levels necessary." And that again is from Chad Clark. So we're talking about taking some human resources away from the treasurer and giving it to our executive assistant. Some of those duties are consolidate confidential human resource functions under town administration, not subject to election process, streamlines with the limited human resources functions already being performed by executive assistant, aligns with the position, human resources, expertise and training, support treasurer, collector and allow focus on financial roles and responsibilities, I think that's important, more coordinated approach with town administrator, i.e. claims, liabilities, management, collective bargain issues, et cetera. Payroll and personal records would remain in the treasurer's office, treasurer would continue to manage payroll deductions and employees' benefits per statute, and consolidating responsibilities between an average of four to five hours a week related to claims management requirements. Additional responsibilities to executive assistant, HR coordinator, would be coordination of 111F Police and Fire, paperwork and deadline-driven process, case monitoring, independent medical exam, i.e. IME, coordination, record retention, management of claims with town administrators to work with 111F representatives and attorneys. Executive assistant and town administrator already work to coordinate insurance management efforts. This would complement and better coordinate existing efforts. Workers' compensation, management, paperwork and deadline-driven process, case monitoring, IME, coordination, record retention, managing of claim with the town administrator to work with workers' compensation representatives and attorneys. Executive assistants already coordinate and manage annual workers' compensation, audit and renewal process, and is trained in the workers' compensation process. Executive assistant and town administrator work to coordinate insurance management efforts that would also complement and better coordinate existing efforts. Processing of family medical leave applications, unemployment claims, processing employee pre-hire core background checks. Irrelevant training would be the Massachusetts Municipal Human Resource Association Bootcamp and Massachusetts Municipal Association Financial Management Seminar, which was held this past fall in 2021. So I know that, Dr. Z, you've worked on human resources, and you know all the work that's involved in this, I just got tired just reading all the responsibilities and duties that Ms. Brady's gonna have to do.
Well, he's making it sound like it's not pleasant, Mrs. Brady.
I'm just saying it's difficult and complicated, and it's not, not anybody can do it. I know myself, I wouldn't be able to do it. Are there any questions that the board may have?
I don't have any que, may I make just a brief statement? And I'm not here plugging, you know, my full-time job or anything, but what I would say is, just from the years of experience that I have in the public and private sector, that typically, human resources functions fall under executive departments, which in the town of Dayton would be the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator's Office, so I'm gonna support this. It follows the model that most organizations that I know, private or public, take in regards to their human resources, so it makes sense, especially when you're dealing with confidentiality is very, very important, especially in municipal government, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Selectman Hall?
Following and totally agreeing with Dr. Z in regards to the, the need for this position to be in the executive area of our government, I would like also to add that the individual who is going to be stepping into this role has proven her loyalty and her hard work to this town, and, and the amount of effort that she has put in, the extra hours that she has put in, certainly make her worthy of this position.
Thank you for that. And we, we know, and I'm sure the administrator knows, all the work that, you just alluded to, that, all the work that Ms. Brady does, I know I've gotten emails when she's got days off, I know I, I know I've received minutes on days off that she has off, I know that she's had contact with us when she's been on vacation. I wouldn't be doing that, but it's appreciated that you do do it. When you go on vacation, I would hope that you can just focus on your vacation, but I understand that you feel like a need to work for the town, and for you as 24/7, and even when you're on vacation, you're still doing work for the town, so it's fully appreciated. Town Administrator?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, like, quick question, like, I, yeah, a quick thing, like, I, so a quick thing, like, I just really want to emphasize that this move is being backed up by like our independent auditor, like, it's being backed up by like our, being backed up by like our independent auditor. We went, like, we each year, we go through an independent audit, so our auditors were here in January doing their field work, and this was one of, and this was one of the top issues that they picked up on as well. So like, in over the last, in over the last two months, we've been working with the Department of Revenue as well on the financial management review that we have ongoing, and this is another priority of theirs. So, yeah, like, it's being backed up by financial experts, by our auditor and the Department of Revenue. and the Department of Revenue.
Yes.
To that point, just for clarification.
Yes.
This, um, this proposal actually came from the independent auditor, not the proposal, but the, they started asking questions about our process.
Asking the questions and it really made us think. Oh, like, oh, yeah, like as you know, like at the same time, we're going through, we're going through the financial management review and we began talking with them about the process and the transitions we have on. Uh, yeah, like and we talked with them about it as well. Like and they also, as I mentioned, backed this up because they see this as the best practice.
And let me read then what, I'm glad you brought that up to what Chad Clark said. Human resources. The town has been growing significantly over the last decade in numerous ways and with the laws and guidelines getting stricter surrounding personal management, employee benefits, related record maintenance, evaluation, reporting tasks. The town now has many of the same issues as bigger communities in that regard. It is not the number of employees anymore that is driving the need for a human resource dedicated position, but the fact that having any sizable employee base spread among multiple unions and different department operations requires a centralized and focused management of this extremely key operational area of the town. Like many towns, Dayton's human resource function is currently being administered through treasurer's office and at time has either hamstrung the office or has caused inefficiencies in the human resource function. Many of those other impacted towns are now creating a dedicated human resource position to be the operative expert. As many municipalities are finding that over time, human resources duties were slowly pushed onto treasurer's personnel who are not significantly trained or supported to perform such tasks at the level necessary. The town should evaluate creating a dedicated human resource office to administer, to administer, to administer the process and become a valuable resource to employees and town management. The issues associated with human resources are growing and are not slowing down. That was from Chad Clark. So there's definitely a need for that. So we've also discussed and voted in executive session on the contract. There is an increase in salary, which is totally appropriate, given the additional responsibilities and duties that she's going to entail on this position. Are there any other questions or any concerns about the contract? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the contract. Selectman Hull?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to consolidate the human resource duties as stated here into the current executive assistant position.
Second?
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yep.
Uh, when would this duties change be effective after town meeting vote, a successful town meeting vote, correct?
Yes.
We're amending, but we're changing the job description now.
So.
Maybe I'm overthinking this.
No, no, you're right. You're, we're changing the job description now, the success. So the, so the contract in place for the executive assistant now runs through the end of the fiscal year. The, so that runs through the end of the fiscal year, but the jobs, so the job description, the job description that's embedded in the current contract also runs through the end of the fiscal year. So, uh, so the new job description would take effect, the new job description would technically take effect on July 1, but it's anticipated that between now and then, so it's anticipated between that, anticipated between now and then, there'll be transition, there'll be transition, there'll be transition efforts happening as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the, I mean, we have an election April 9th, so the new treasurer, we'll have a new treasurer effective that date and those duties will change?
Those, I said, those duties will begin transitioning at that point, but we want to not over, yeah, like we'll have to be careful about how we transition and we can manage that internally.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yep. And you second that motion, right?
I did, yes.
Yes, okay. I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. So, so now we'll entertain a motion on the contract itself?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion or questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. The next agenda items, Review Discuss and Act on the Board of Selectmen's Town Administrator's Administrative Assistant Employment Contract and Job Description. And I don't think, we've already voted on the contract. I don't think the duties have changed that much, although we know that she's not here, but she's going to get additional duties as time goes on. So I'll entertain a motion to approve her contract.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we ratify the administrative assistance contract as presented this evening.
Second?
Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Thank you.
So just really quick, if I could, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like on that, on the contract, on the contract for the administrative assistant, I, on the contract for the administrative assistant, I just want to be clear that that, so the increase going into FY23 was two and a half percent on top of what she's getting now, which is exactly the same with the clerical union as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda items, Review Discuss and Act on Tree Donation from Jason La Chance, owner of Family Tree Services. To the Board of Selectmen, please be advised that Jason La Chance, owner and operator of Family Tree Services, offered to donate a Kwanzaan cherry tree and would like to plant it in the, in honor of Abba Day, Abba Day sometime in April, I believe, to replace the present elder flowering tree that currently stands by the town gazebo, which will remain at this time. The donated Kwanzaan cherry tree will be planted in the same area. And this is from a tree ward in Tom Ferry. That was very nice and I look forward to seeing it blooming. Entertain a motion to accept this donation.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the tree donation from Jason La Chance of Family Tree Services with thanks and appreciation.
Second?
Is there a second?
I do have a question.
Yep.
And this is for anyone in the room that is able to answer this. Is this the same kind of cherry tree that Washington chopped down?
No, because I, I don't.
I have been wondering that the whole day.
I don't, I'm not sure that they had Japanese cherry trees in the United States.
At that time.
And the, the other thing is, there's a question whether he actually chopped down a cherry tree. So I mean, it's, I hate to burst people's bubble, but I don't believe he actually chopped down. It was a myth. It's like Paul Revere going into Lexington, he never made it. He got stopped and he was drunk and all that kind of good stuff. But anyway, no, I don't believe it's the same. But if you do go to Washington DC in the next few weeks, you're going to see the Kwanzaan cherry tree in bloom there.
I'm still going to support it.
Do we vote on this already or is that?
No.
I'll call for a vote then. Selectman Hull, if you have any other questions on whether George Washington or anybody else cut down a cherry tree. Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's, that's really appreciated.
It is very nice.
So we're going to start the review of the budgets and the first one is the public building and maintenance.
So just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. At the Board Selectmen meeting on January 26th, you actually, the board actually approved budget number 192. So that budget is all approved. I'm not sure if you want to go through it again. That's fine too.
No.
All right. So why is it on the agenda then?
Yeah.
Oh, we just realized.
Oh, okay. It was, okay, it was a typo.
Yeah, it was an oversight. I apologize.
So for the next agenda item, Building Inspection 241, if we, I don't believe we've voted on that one yet.
No.
I hope not.
You just, we could have told you that in a text.
We could have been sitting home.
Yeah. So hello, everyone. I won't bore you with the letter that prefaces my budget, but I will tell you that permit count is strong, different types of permits. So that means the inspection responsibilities are the same. So I level funded the budget with the exception of contractual obligations. And the only thing I'll bring to your attention is I only recently acquired the weights and measures. I'm still vetting that department. I am going to apply the same principles that I do with the rest of the departments under my control. So I'm going to make that a revenue strong department that covers its expenses. So I just haven't, haven't gotten that far yet. So I'm fine with the number that's in the budget now, but when I come back before you to modify permit fees, we may talk about that as well.
Okay. Is there any questions on the budget? It looks like the only increase, there's been some reductions in some of the discounts, but the only increase is in salaries, which is contractual and we're obligated to. Selectman Hull?
My question is, the permitting fees that you bring in, the revenue, are you allowed to carry that over from one fiscal year to the next?
No. This came up years ago.
So it goes into the general account?
Right. We would have had to create an enterprise department to do that and that's just not something that's standard in building departments. So when the excess revenue years are before us, we've had good local receipts, that goes to free cash. That's when we made capital expenditures. So we're still going to be on, in the green, but it's going to be right there. So I've made sure that my permit fees cover the expenses in the department, but we're certainly not going to be contributing to the local receipts like we have been in the years past.
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Entertain a motion?
I actually have a question. I don't know.
Yep.
I may?
It's fine.
Um, for 5105.
Yes.
It's about a 2%. And so my question before I do this is based on kind of what happened last year, where we had to redo certain things because calculations weren't correct or the percentages were not correct or whatever. So my question is, is it supposed to be the same as the clerical union?
Yes. So the, there was a two and a half percent increase applied to the building commissioner's rate, but he works, so he works, he works 40 hours.
Okay.
So the 40 hours compounded out, the 40 hours compounded out on the rate. So it comes out too, because the increase is on the hourly rate and not the salary. So that's how we get to under 2%. But it is.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure so we didn't have to redo it.
Yeah, no, no, and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So and the town accountant is on the Zoom as well and she's backing up everything.
I trust your math, Mrs. Vining. Don't worry.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend, I always have to find that right word, recommend account 241 in the amount of $171,234 even.
I second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye also.
Thank you.
Account number 242, gas inspection. This is level funded, funded. There's no request, request for an increase. So I will, unless you want to speak on it, I'll entertain a motion.
May I ask a question? Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Same brain tonight. Do you want me to go first, Selectman Hull?
Well, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, no, you got to go first.
My question is, why is there an, and I'm not complaining about it. You know I'm going to support it, but why is there a 9% reduction in the gas inspector's stipend?
The gas inspector's stipend was something that was just created this year. So I can't answer that. It's probably just something, the rubric in the, in the spreadsheet. That stipend is a newly mandated requirement from the state where my subordinate inspectors have to review the permits. So I'm paying the lead inspector in each discipline a stipend to review the permits. It's actually for work that's, that they're going to undertake. I can't tell you why there's a 9%, because last year we didn't have a number there.
Okay.
So yeah, like and what happened, so going into town meeting last year, we added the, we added the 5107 into the budget, but it didn't carry into the warrant.
Okay.
So the total bottom line was the, was the, was the $8,000, but it was all one. So here it's being broken up into two.
Okay.
And the, so in the 5107, which is a new line.
It is the same. Okay.
It's exactly the same. It's just split.
Why we have him.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That makes sense.
Selectman Hull?
I know we don't have an enterprise system, but when you establish your permitting fees, wouldn't this be a wash in the sense that the money you take in for the permitting fee would go back out to pay?
Yes. When I came to Dayton, I, I set up the department to run that way. That is correct. However, when you have years that had extreme growth, the revenues exceeded the expenses in the department and that's why we contributed significantly to local receipts. Now that we've had the pandemic, market fluctuations, a lack of water, which has stymied growth collectively, we're back down to pretty much just an even keel where we're covering our costs.
So these inspections are not just new, but replacements were.
All encompassing. That's correct.
So the money that you took in last year for gas permits was how much?
Probably around $60,000 or $80,000.
Okay. So budget of $8,000 will more than adequately be covered?
Absolutely. Even if we see different types of permits, which is what we're seeing now, we're still going to cover the costs. Yes.
So my point is that $8,000 really will not be coming out of the taxpayers' pocket. It'll be coming out of permits.
My department, the way it's been operated since I took it over, the taxpayers don't fund, technically they have to appropriate the money, but the revenues that we receive exceed the cost of my department. That is correct. Additionally, when I made changes to the department, I felt that if you were putting a roof on your house, there's no reason why everybody else should pay that. So the cost to put a roof on your house for the permit, the processing, the inspections are all borne by you, not someone else. So running it that way has proved to be beneficial to us. We're just getting into a, an economy that unfortunately I'm not going to be able to give you the big local receipts that we have in the past. So we're going to have to tighten up the belt.
But it'll certainly, what we see will cover this number.
Absolutely. And that's why I want to vet the weights and measures the same way, to make sure that the taxpayers aren't covering the cost for weights and measures. Those are borne by the people who gain those services, which is the businesses who need the scales, the pumps inspected.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. So the bottom line is I'm not paying for Lenny Hull's.
No, 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 you're not.
Oh, my gas installation.
Oh, I don't believe we have a motion. I'll entertain a motion on the gas inspection.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 242 in the amount of $8,000.
To a second.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Next account is the plumbing inspections. Account number 243, that's level funded also. Any questions?
Nope. Mike, uh, Town Administrator explained it last.
The same exact, same scenario.
Thank you.
Same graphic as Jim says.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. The Board of Selectmen recommend account number 243 plumbing inspection of $8,000.
Second?
For a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Account number 244, weights and measures. This is less than what was asked for the previous year by $170. Does the board have any questions about this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 244 in the amount of $1,400.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Electrical inspections, this is also level funded, right?
Yes.
Any questions about electrical inspections? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend account number 245, electrical inspection, budget of $20,000.
Second?
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
The next budget item is account number 300, education. And we have somebody here from the Dayton neighborhood school district.
We haven't met before. It's nice to meet you.
Oh, my pleasure. Nice to meet you too.
I met him at the Capitol Outlay Committee meeting. We met him.
Yeah, yeah. This is Rob Baxter. Yeah, yeah. This is Rob Baxter, for purposes of introduction. He's the new school business, the new school business administrator for DR, and he's a pleasure to work with.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mike. It's my pleasure. I really, really enjoy being part of the district, so I'm looking forward to working with everybody.
I just wanted to add that I attended and participated in the subcommittee meetings. And Mr. Baxter really took under advisement suggestions made by the public. And in some instances, their preliminary discussions led to some budget reductions that he's going to present tonight. He has, as Mr. Mullin said, been a great addition to the district. Very transparent and been very willing to work with us. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I've only heard good things about you, so that's good.
You're sitting in the bar now.
I appreciate, thank you very much for all the kind words. You make me feel very welcome and to be part of the extended community. So I appreciate that. And I will say, when I first started, you know, we were video conferencing and whatever, and I, I looked behind Mr. Mullin's, and he's got the picture of the heart. And I just started. I'm like, like, what's going on with these hearts? And he explained to me the story, and I'm like, oh, this is going to be a cool, cool place. So anyways, so thank you very much. Anyway, so I'm happy to be here. And just, I don't have, I'll give a little bit. I don't have final detail. You know that the budget process is fluid, you know, for us to say the least. And then working with the towns is kind of herky-jerky. I'm a railroad guy, so I can picture the cars, kind of like we're going back and forth. And, you know, we're just getting started. So I have, I can talk to what we've already presented to the school committee. I can say that we are currently diligently working on revising, you know, through this week to prepare what I'll call the final superintendent's recommended budget to be presented to the school committee next, next week. But those documents should be going up on the, the public site on Friday. And I would also add before, because, well, I don't think the gentleman's here anymore, but there was a comment about, hey, you know, the 200-page report and whatever. So I, one of the things we, it's going to take a while to implement the changes and the improvements that I really would like to get. It might be a year, two years or more. But we have, I think, and I just wanted to say, try to at least streamline the reporting and make the budget more, more transparent, more digestible. And even like this next batch of reports, we've taken the feedback from, you know, from work with the school committee and the budget subcommittee and the folks that we've just been talking about, you know, the discussions that I have with Mr. Mullin and his counterpart in Rehoboth. And so I think, I think we're working in that direction. We really want to get, get there. So, so anyway, so that's it. I can entertain, I can entertain some questions, or I don't know if you want, I have a little spiel about drivers, or go ahead, go ahead. I'll, we'll do questions.
I don't know. I'm kind of interested in the drivers thing now. All right, in all seriousness, and I know that a lot of the detail, this is my first rodeo, so I know that a lot of the details like still have to be fleshed out by the school committee through many, many meetings. But to the best of your knowledge, in just not having to give specific numbers, I do see that there is a five, proposed 5.6% increase in the DR Regional School District assessment over last year. And my question is, hoping that you can answer it at this point, how much of that increase is an investment in the students? Meaning the cost that the taxpayers contribute to each student? And I don't have that number. I thought it was 13,000 and change per student. I could be wrong. Do you have an idea?
So I'm going to, I'm going to go backwards, right? So, so right now, our per pupil operating expense is closer to, closer to $16,000 per person. Which actually, again, compared to, I will say, compared to other communities, especially, you know, west and south of us, that's, that's, that's a very efficient operation. I would say it's a very efficient operation. So, so taking a step back from that, so the drivers and the increase and what do, I think what you're asking is like what, where's that going? So the, 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 I'm trying to, I'm trying to take my answer.
Yeah, no, take your time. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, 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 no. The drivers are fundamentally in three or four big categories, if we talk in generality.
Sure.
One is in special education. One is in contractually negotiated salary increases. And then the third is in fuel. And that, that's a recent, so, so the, if I take the first two, right? Those, certainly special education is directly, goes directly to the student.
Yes.
So that, that is a student-driven need. The second is predominantly salaries for instructional staff. And that's, again, goes directly to the student. And from what I've seen, we've got, you know, top, top-tier teachers. I mean, and, you know, high-quality, dedicated folks. I'm getting to know a few of them, and I've been, I've been impressed by the dedication and, and, you know, the creativity and things like that. So I, so I think that's, and then finally is fuel. And the bulk, so I'll get into a little bit there. So the, my predecessor did a great job. My predecessor negotiated electricity rates for several years, locked in a couple of years ago, about a year ago. So our electricity rates are really good, about, just about 10 cents a kilowatt hour. But the fuel oil, natural gas, our contract is set to expire in December. We've got some propane, that, and then diesel for the buses. That's, those are the big, and while we, while we have some contractual, you know, clauses to govern the fuel, the fuel increases for the buses, I'm still, I think it's put into budget for an increase. And so those would be the three big drivers. And then if I can extrapolate from your question, so on, on the other side, right? Because I think we should be cognizant of the, the offsets, right? There's been a lot of work to offset these increases, right? If you added up all of those increases, it'd be much more than the, than the assessment, than the assessment shows. And also, I think what you'll see is when we finally get through this, you know, the whole process, the sausage is finally made, so to speak, I think, I think, you know, that the assessment, the final assessment would be less than the preliminary assessment. So, so how did we, we get there, I think is important too, that we have been working hard to identify efficiencies. And a couple of areas that, again, should be, should be recognized is that for, for many reasons. But again, it would be directly related to the, what else? That the positive behavior of the, of the staff is that we've got no increase in health insurance going forward, which I think is a phenomenal accomplishment.
That's a miracle.
The, again, I mentioned about our electricity expense is, should be, will be flat. So that, that's, that's an avoided cost increase. And then two more things. The, we have seen, and we'll talk about this, I'm sure you guys will ask it a little bit, but we've, have seen an increase in federal funding that we've been using, not only to offset the costs directly related to our pandemic response and all this other stuff, but also to kind of help put some, kind of strengthen our educational program. So it's allowed us to fund technology in some of the classroom, a lot of the classrooms. We've got more grants that, that we've won, a significant grant that will help pay for more Chromebooks for next year that's separate from federal funding. So, so there's been a lot of work done there. Yeah, and then, and then finally, we've, we're taking a step back and especially on the Dayton campus to, to kind of take a pause on capital improvements. Because we can talk, I'm sure you guys will ask, but, but that also means that there's some budget relief there this year for that. So, so I think, yes, we have some, some drivers that are pushing for an increase, but we've also done some, some, you know, we're seeing the rewards of some hard work that was done to offset those increases. And, you know, we'll see where we kind of end up.
Thank you. And I didn't, I just wanted to, I didn't mean my question was, I mean, $600,000 is a lot of money. I'm not saying I'm not going to support it. Just wanted to know.
Oh.
Where that was in relationship to the actual students? Because the whole, as you know, purpose of the school is to educate the kids. So I appreciate your answer. It was very transparent.
100%. Anytime. Thank you.
Selectmen Hall?
Mr. Baxter, I have quite a few questions.
Lay it on me.
Regards to transportation. Do you currently have any bus contracts that you are negotiating?
So, all right, hold on.
Or have they all been negotiated and you're locked in for next year?
So, yeah, again, if, if you want to end the meeting, sure. You just tell me I'm giving you too much information. So we, so, but I'll start.
I like transparency. My vote is due too.
Okay, good, good. So, so we have, we have two transportation contractors. One, the best way to picture is one for the big buses, one for the little buses. Right, so, and we have contracts for both, and we're currently under contract. So we're not going out to bid this year. Our contract goes through next, next, next year for, for, I'm positive, yeah, no, I'm positive for both the big buses and the little buses. So, and, and that also includes a fuel clause. Go ahead.
Now, in regards to that, you're reimbursed by the state for transportation, especially in the area of special.
Yep.
Education. Has the state indicated that there may be some increases in reimbursements or based on astronomical cost of fuel?
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to add my flavor to this, right? Because at the, at the same time, we're going through our budget process, the state is going through their budget process. So the best, so, so at this point, we, I am using my best estimates, the numbers that I get from the state, right? So, so, so I, which are not done until their budget, right? So I, so I, so for your, I guess I'm giving you this, this, I'm just qualifying my answer before. Because, so, so at this point, we're in, in the budget process, we're using, I want to say, a preliminary number, right? So that, that may change as we get closer to the, to the budget approval in June. So I, just to kind of put that out there. But right, so right now, for the transportation assessment, I think, no, I have not been notified, but I can ask, I've got, and I'll tell you why in a second. I've been asked, but I do not have an increased transportation re, me. I do not have an increased transportation reimbursement figure in, built into the budget. Now, I'll take that and I'll make some calls tomorrow and say, hey, I'm getting ready to wrap this up. Where should I, you know, where should I be? You know, so I'll call the state and I'll see what we can do. I'll see if there's an answer.
In reviewing the education budget, I see very little reference to chapter 74 reimbursements. Is that because it's minimal or?
I know, you know, hold on. I will look that, I don't know. That's a good point. I should know that. So I know we've got chapter 70 in there, because I'm, right now, I'm picturing, I'm picturing what we do, the schedule that I gave for the assessment. And there's a chapter 70 line, and then there's like a miscellaneous state revenue line. I, I don't know. I don't remember. But I, but I will, for the school committee meeting on next week, I will have the answer.
Thank you. I have two more questions. Indy?
Yes.
Under your current budget, are you looking at going, will you be above the ceiling?
This is a question, this is a question I can.
5%?
Yep, this is, this is a question that I can answer. And I will give a, what I'll call a, I'm answering you, but I'm just, I'm also answering for anybody else's listening, so that's why I give. So I will give you a general answer because of the state that, the, the status of where we're at, and then hopefully have more detail for you. But, so this is, this is where, so, so for us to get our access certified, we, we just, we need to finish our audit. So I have preliminary numbers. I don't have our final numbers that I can give to the state to be, to be certified. But at this time, it does look like, we are very, I am fairly certain that there will be not only the 5%, that we, that the, that the district will have its full 5% excess, but that there will be a significant turnback to the town, to each member of town. So, and, and the, the key, the, the key drivers, the contributors to that are, are, are a few. There's, so, so we're talking about the, the excess as of June 30th, 2021, right now, right? So, so the excess at that point was due to a few major factors. The first one was we had, we did have significant excess roll forward from fiscal '20 for a couple of different reasons. But you remember it was in a bridged year, and there were some other accounting things going on. But we had a significant excess that is going to roll forward, right? What I, what I would call rolling forward. Then, in addition to that, I remember fiscal '21, school year 2020 to 2021, was an abridged school year. We had abridged operations because of the COVID response. There were significant savings there. Third, the, the, there was additional federal funding that the district was able to take advantage of in that year. And then finally, we also had a favorable variance again with our health insurance. So, so all of those added up to a very significant excess that will result in a significant turnback to the towns. And right now, again, Mr. Mullin and I have been talking about this. So I've got some calls into the Department of Revenue, and what we're going to try to do is arrange a conference call. So as, as, as my information, because I, I don't want to go, I don't want to jump the gun until we've got numbers that everybody buys off on, signs off on. And then, but as we start this planning process, I want to, we want to try, we spoke, and we want to set up a, like a conference call between the district, myself, Mr. Mullin and his counterpart in Rehoboth, to say, okay, this is what's going to happen, you know, for planning purposes, so that, that we can kind of, because we know that this is going to impact your, you know, your planning. So, so that's kind of, and I expect that to all kind of unfold and solidify in the next week and a half or so. Like maybe like by this time next week or a little bit later. So, yeah, so that's, so I.
And your next school committee meeting is next Tuesday? No, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I appreciate your candor. I really do.
Yes.
I know it's like complicated, so I really respect, you know, that you have to condense all this complicated information into short answers, but I do appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. That's it. Am I dismissed?
Well, you can, you can hang out with us if you want.
We haven't taken a vote yet.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, folks. Have a nice night.
Thank you, sir. You too.
Now, we vote on the whole number, not on the individual schools. Is that correct?
It's my understanding we're going to be voting on the whole number, but-
Like the other ones, yeah.
Obviously, it's tentative as far as, at least I hope it anyway, as far as the figure goes.
We may have to revote.
Well, here's, here's a-
Yep.
And it's kind of a, a pet peeve with me. Mr. Baxter gave an excellent presentation this evening. Are we contractually obligated to the Bristol County Agricultural Operating and Debt Assessment and the Bristol Plymouth Assessment? Or should they be in here also defending their budgets to us?
They actually have come in years past. Did we, my first question that I always ask is, did we invite them?
Yes. So, yeah, to, uh, so, uh, so that, when I would, uh, like, uh, yeah, like, based on the DR budget being initially proposed budget, like, we don't actually have final budget figures yet from the AGI either. Uh, they were invited, I believe Derek Coster. Uh, he wasn't able, he wasn't able to make tonight, but I believe he asked, he asked to join us for a future meeting. Uh, like, and the same with BP as well. Uh, but, uh, the BP, the BP increase, like, is just really strictly based on enrollment. Uh, the twenty, uh, the twen, the almost $21,000 increase is just, I, I believe based on one additional student, based on the, uh, yeah, based on the per pupil expenditures.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Can I ask the town administrator question?
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
So, my concern, and I think I know where you're going with this, and actually, I'm going to support it if you want to wait on this, not because we don't support the schools. I think we all do. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I'm pretty sure we all do. My concern specifically with BP is we heard tonight that from Dayton Rehoboth that they have increased costs due to fuel.
Yes.
BP, you know, our kids drive further, so I feel like that figure may not be entirely accurate or anticipating those increased fuel costs. So, I feel like we might-
Yeah, we can-
We might want to wait until we have-
Yeah, and I'd be happy to follow up and, I'd be happy to follow up in the meantime as well.
Thank you.
Uh, on the AGI, as I mentioned, we are waiting for final information on their budget as well. Uh, like, in talking, um, in talking with business minister, with Business Administrator Coster a few weeks ago, uh, like, he, he is anticipating, he is anticipating that the trustees and the county commissioners, uh, 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 yeah, like, uh, in the, like, in the current tuition, uh, there is a proposed increase just in the tuition alone, uh, like, between $200 and $400. Uh, and they don't actually have a final number yet of what, um, of what, of what that figure is going to be. Like, I put in a $350, a $350 increase just as a higher end of the placeholder, uh, but we don't actually have a final number yet on that. Uh, like, on the other hand, though, we do, uh, like, as we know, beginning last year, we also had, uh, we also had like a capital expense, uh, like, for, as part of our, as part of our AGI tuition as well. And, um, I, like, I did the math at, at one point in this break, but, uh, that part, that part of the AGI assessment for FY '23 is solid at this point. And that is sixteen, that's our enrollment based on the October 1st enrollment to DESI. Sixteen times, it's sixteen times 5,498. So, of the, I think, $137,000, uh, like, for the entire assessment, uh, just, uh, just the capital assessment alone, as part of that, like, is $86,400. Uh, but, uh, but this is only year two of the ramp up that'll happen in enrollment. So, the hope is, so the hope is that as, the hope is that as the enrollment, as the enrollment increases at the AGI, that cost per pupil will be spread, will be spread out, will be spread out between, will be spread out be, between more cities and towns. Obviously, that's just a projection, but that's what they're hoping. Uh, like, and that over time, and that over time would draw, uh, like, allow the, allow the per student, the per student capital assessment to come down, uh, uh, like, from the rate of $5,400 right now. So, but as, yeah, yeah, like, but I can reach out to Derek, uh, like, and, and to su, and to superintendent, and to Superintendent Miguel Hees, I can, I can, oh, yeah, I can try to get them to attend an upcoming meeting so we can hear from them.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
In regards to the per pupil cost and the number of students that are going to BP and BA?
Okay, yep.
Do, in determining the number of students, do we use the October 1st date to set how much we owe them?
That's what they set for us, yes. That is a universe.
Now, if a student leaves, do they reimburse us?
No, we'd have to wait until, I believe, the October, uh, everything hinges, I believe, and I could be wrong, but I'm almost positive that everything relies, uh, everything relies on the October, October 1st, that's the report.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
So, should we ask that this be continued to our next meeting and they may not be able to attend, but at least-
I would prefer that, yes. May I make one comment before I make the motion? Um, and I meant to say this earlier. Selectmen Hall had mentioned that, uh, because BP has similar programs, you know, it affects the ability of DR to essentially have those programs or have them in a way that it may compete with-
You can negotiate with-
Yeah, correct. So, I understand, because we're not the only community that feels this, because it's, not that it's a competition, because it's not, but it is, you know, expensive to send the kids to BP versus having like a thriving vocational program. So, I understand that. But again, we're not the only community, um, that is affected by that. My understanding is there is a bill that either has passed the Massachusetts House or is slated to be taken up and looks like it may pass, um, that would essentially allow the state to fund, not through Chapter 74. It would be a new thing that gets created, to fund compete or competitive vocational programs. Um, so, we should definitely keep up with that.
Is-
Selectmen Hall?
Something that came up during the interviews. One of the people that was involved in leading the fight for that bill is now, is going to be July 1st, our superintendent, Mr. Rooney. He is very much on board with Chapter 74 funding and increasing it in the district. My experience is in Taunton. Um, we can negotiate with BP. And both of you heard it from Eddie Dutra and the superintendent from Bristol Plymouth. They are willing to work with the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District if the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional School District reaches out to them. And in my discussions with Superintendent-elect Mr. Rooney, he will be reaching out to, to BP to make that happen, which will address some of the issues of students who can't get into BP, who really want to be, gain those skills. Um, but it 'll also bring extra revenue into the district.
Thank you. And we'll keep, which we should definitely keep up with how, how that migrates, um, its way through the legislature. It's very important.
One of the things that, who's been a champion for Dayton and also for education, our rep, Pat Hadad, we might want to reach out to her and see if she would help push that bill through.
And in my discussions, just, um, informally with other local state reps from other communities around us, they seem to be interested in the merits of it. I mean, not everything is fleshed out. There's moving parts, of course. Um, but I think, again, we're not the only community that feels the impacts, I would call them. And I'm not making judgments on good or bad, um, but the, things have impacts. I mean, things have consequences. So, we should definitely keep up with that and how it evolves. Thank you. Motion?
Yes. That's fine. It was a good conversation.
You're a good sport tonight. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we, uh, take under advisement accounts 300 until we have some more concrete figures.
I second that.
Any discussion?
I want to thank Mr. Baxter as well. Very much, sir.
Yeah, thank you. You won't have to come back for yours. I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchica was an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, uh, agenda item is the Veterans Services, five, account number 543. Veteran, Veterans Agent is present.
Thank you for waiting.
I've been to a lot of meetings. So, the budget that I present is based on historical knowledge that I gathered from past budgets and not institutional knowledge, because this is the first budget I present to you. So, if you have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
I do too. I see that the Veterans Memorial Civics function has increased. Now, we've had a conversation about this because you were limited in the past that that account was only for veteran, excuse me, for Memorial Day. Am I correct?
This line item should have a, um, in addition to it. Because right now, um, 5771 says Memorial Day Fund, but I believe what was presented was slash civic events.
It says-
That's probably a typo, so we'll catch up to that.
It says and civic events.
Yeah, the one I have in front of me. Okay, so I have some, I have something different.
So, you weren't able to use any of those funds?
And the type in small, and it's a small budget, so that's what happens. Well, this, no, this doesn't come from you. This came from my office. So, I, I did it to myself. I was self-inflicted. Self-inflicted.
I own everything, whether I like it or not.
I was going to say, we can't even afford to get the landscape printed version.
No, I did it. Self-inflicted.
Dr. Z, you had a question?
Uh, I do. Um, and it's, it's just to make sure that the numbers are accurate before we, um, vote on it. I thought that the clerical union employees were to receive 2.5%?
2.5. Again, that is based on working days and also-
All right.
And also the, uh, the hourly, the annually hour, annualized hourly rate, uh, split between Veteran Services and the Building Department.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, but yeah, those-
I won't ask it again next time.
No, like, I have OCD about that, because I have been through rate issues myself and priors, and I discovered issues after they, uh, yeah, and I have, uh, OCD slash PTSD from those issues. So, and, yeah, like, really making sure those are accurate.
I have a little bit of it too from last year, so I apologize.
No, 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 I get it. I get, I get it completely.
But I, I support this, um, and I look forward to recommending what is suggested tonight. Hmm?
Any other questions?
I think, Mr. Administrator.
So, I just have, like, I just have one question for the Veterans Agent, and I've, uh, like, and I've just been really trying to, uh, like, understand what it means over the last year or so. Uh, but in line, um, in line with 5770, like, we appropriate every, like, every year, like, $75,000. Uh, but, uh, like, actually, if we go back, like, historically, in FY, hold on a second, uh, wrong line. Um, in FY '21, uh, we, um, uh, we spent $25,800 roughly. Then, the year prior to that, um, we spent $36,000 roughly. And then, we, the year before that, in FY '19, we spent almost $41,000. So, does that, uh, like, line 5770, does that, uh, does that directly relate to what we put in for 111, 115 benefits? Or how does that work?
That's Chapter 115 benefits. And what I've discovered in looking at the last five years, that it's progressively declined.
Okay.
That's the way through the whole state. Veterans, unfortunately, World War II veterans, et cetera, are getting older and no longer with us. So, here in Dayton, we probably have half of the amount of Chapter 115 recipients as we did five years ago. And historically, over the last three years, there's been a turnback of approximately 40,000 on the overall budget. So, um, that's where these figures are today. That money, as you know, goes right back to the general fund, ends up in free cash, and then gets re-appropriated. What we don't know is what the influx of veterans are going to be, if any, due to everyone getting out after they, you know, the military is not in Afghanistan anymore. So, they are getting released and coming home. And, uh, you never know who's going to come in for benefits. So, um, but yeah, in that figure on, what we spend on Chapter 115 is 75%.
Yeah, yeah, that's only, yeah, that's only the three quarters.
75% reimbursed. So, the town commitment is, is, is 25% on what we pay out.
Yes.
So, that's the, um, the small picture.
So, we need to appropriate it first in order to provide the benefits and then we can reimburse.
Yeah, well, you know how the state is. They pay us a year late. For anything we pay this month of March, we're going to get reimbursed next March. That's how they do it with the electronic transfers. But they, but they put, but they put the whole amount of what you're expecting on the cherry sheet to make it look like you're getting it. But you're not getting it.
Selectmen Hall?
So, as a result of doing it that way, that money goes into free cash, not the general account? Because if you're always getting reimbursed a year behind-
Oh, so I'm sorry. Uh, so the funding, so, so, uh, uh, yeah, so in recent, in recent fiscal years, we have appropriated $75,000 a year. Of that, of that $75,000, historically in the last few years, um, in FY '21, uh, what we actually spent was $25,833. The year before that was roughly $36,000. Uh, the year before that was $40,847. However, however, if we go back, if we go back to FY '21, pay attention to F, the 100%, the 100%, the 100% of the FY '21 actually expenditures, that $25,833, uh, and then we go back to our cherry sheet, uh, we go back to our cherry sheet revenues, just like Mr., just like Mr. Hag mentioned, uh, you can see the 75% that we're anticipating in getting back in FY '23 now? Hold on, wait for it. Um, uh, uh, yeah, like, uh, like, and the numbers apps, and the numbers absolutely line up. So, so right here, uh, in, uh, for FY '23 and going into FY '23, based on the cherry sheet, the, the roughly 75% of the 25 comes out to right around $20,000. So, you can see, uh, 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 yeah, on the cherry sheet, you can see where we get, where we get that revenue back from, where we get that revenue back through the reimbursement from the state through the cherry sheet process.
No, no, I, I understand that. But does this budget reflect the revenue that they're going to get back from the previous year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, but, so-
It's just, if I'm hearing that traditionally-
Yes.
The Veterans A, is Agent, is, Veterans Budget Services is putting $30,000 to $40,000 in free cash. Is that correct?
If I might explain, if I couldn't, like, from my understanding of it, even though I have expenses, expenditures, I don't have a revenue line item. So, there's no place- no place for it to show on revenue here. So, the revenue ends up going quarterly into your general account, which there ends up, unless you make a transfer somewhere during the year, if you needed that as it comes in, you could transfer it.
Okay.
Appropriation, but it doesn't work, I don't think, the way you're thinking, because there's no revenue line item. If there was a revenue line item, then it would fund itself here, but it's not.
Oh, no, no, thank you.
That's the way I see it.
Yeah, no, that makes, yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 543 in the amount of $128,607.
Second?
Any discussion?
I do have one last question. My apologies.
No need to apologize.
5481 gasoline and diesel fuels. I probably should have asked it before. Are we anticipating, it doesn't look like a lot of it has been spent yet. Are we, it, has that line been affected by the rise in gas prices? Will you still have enough money?
Not to this point, and I don't think it will be, because, like everything else, that service has diminished. We take the older veterans, Mr. Hag, she's been doing that, and he averages a few a month, but I think that's adequate.
Thank you. No further questions.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye.
Thank you, Mr. Hag.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. The next budget item is six, account number 600, Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So, and if, so, the, so, Mr. Wood from the Sewer Department, he wanted to be there, but he's at the other hearing, so if we could table that as well.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, like, I like the printing of the Veterans Budget. That was actually my fault, so I own that.
Uh-oh.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we take account 600 under advisement.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye also. Thank you. Next count is account number 630, Parks and Recreation.
He was on.
Yeah, I believe that Mr. Smith, Kevin Smith, is maybe on Zoom. I can't see if he's.
Oh, there he is. He's on his couch.
Oh, wow, we got the video, too.
Haircut.
Give me your name. Give me your name.
Hey, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I was taking a little siesta while I waited for you guys.
I was falling asleep myself. Parks and Recreation, it looks like you're seeking level funding?
Yeah, no changes. I mean, if you guys want to recommend sprinkling an extra zero in there somewhere, I don't know. Got a lot of big dreams and aspirations.
I actually do have a couple of questions.
You're doing a great job. Dr. Z, you have some questions?
Yes. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Smith, the level funding, and I used to ask the prior Chair of the Parks and Rec this all the time, so I'm just being fair here and distributing the love equally. Line 5240, equipment repairs and maintenance. A lot of times, it does, you know, other than FY '21, it doesn't look like a lot of repairs are being made, or maybe they're just not needed, which is fine. What will the $14,700 for FY '23 go to? And I guess I'm just curious as to why it's not more? Because some of the park equipment, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I know this is your area of expertise, certainly not mine, but I thought some of the equipment at, like, the school lane playground needed to be replaced. Up until a few years ago, it was literally the same merry-go-round that I probably was on as a little kid, and same slide as well. So, could you just clarify that for me?
So, tip, like, what we did last year is we addressed a lot of fencing issues and things of that nature. The problem nowadays is the cost of equipment almost takes that entire line item. So, when we get into talking about replacing, you know, anything beyond, you know, swing seats, swing chains, like, really, really simple pieces of equipment, and just off of, like, the research I've been doing, for example, for the North Dyke Playground, I think, like, the merry-go-round carousel that we have in there, without installation, is like $18,000. So, it's really hard to address big, big equipment pieces, like, within our budget. It's more like, we've been trying to address more things, like, you know, like I said, fencing for last year. This year, we have some improvements through CPC money for the North Dyke and Ball Field, so we open it out of our budget. We're going to buy new benches and for the dugout, things like that.
Okay. Can I, can I maybe make a suggestion? You can do whatever you want with it, because what do I know? I would almost suggest that Parks and Rec take a zero-based budgeting approach in year, in the next few years, meaning, take it year by year, based on whatever your internal plan is for replacing equipment. And I think maybe the public could expect that every year, that budget won't be the same because you're replacing different things or addressing different needs at the parks. So, that would be my humble little suggestion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In following up on that, the submission or creation of a five-year maintenance program would also help to inform the voters of what is coming down the road, rather than doing it, you know, spur of the moment and catching people by surprise when it comes time with other budget priorities that the town may have. If they know ahead of time this is coming down the road, they're more likely to be accepting of it.
Yes.
Than surprising them with this increase. I do have, I notice in reviewing, that the issue of supplies and equipment, the department request was $500, and it, and it was, town administrator's recommendation was $250, as well as professional and technical, a decrease from 500 to 250. Mr. Mullin, I was, I was wondering the rationale for that.
Yes, so, we, so, when, when Jim and Smith and I met on this, like, we reviewed the budget and looked, like, in one of the methods of trying to anticipate the costs in the, oh, and the next year was looking at the current year expenses, like, and I, and I proposed to decrease, actually, both lines in half because of the percent of budget that has actually been expended this year. So, those lines are each funded at $500 apiece, but seven months through the fiscal year, there's been nothing expended from them. So, yeah, that's why I proposed to, to reduce both those lines in my recommendations by 250 in both places.
Mr. Smith, do you anticipate spending that money before the end of the fiscal year?
I don't anticipate spending the full 500 in my, like, Administrator Mullin had stated, we had a conversation, and those two line items aren't something that we, you know, typically use every year. We do have a couple of things, if even I just have some printing products and things of that nature for professional and technical. We were talking about maybe doing some, you know, shirts for the commission, so we, people know who we are when we're holding an event, but we don't forecast spending the full 500, so I was okay with his recommendation of decreasing both of those, because we typically don't use them.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You had a question?
That is, no, no, that answered my question.
Dr. Z?
My last question, Mr. Smith, is what line does, for example, the expenses for the Firecracker Festival come out of? Is it 50, 350?
That is correct. So, actually, just wanted to add a little note to that as well, which last year, I can't, off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what, there it is, right? 180 is what we used to do the Firecracker Festival last year. We're hoping that this year, we add a little more to it. I also did secure a grant from the Dayton Cultural Council in the amount of, I believe it was $1,380, towards the Firecracker Festival. We also did get anonymous donations towards the Firecracker Festival, so we have some additional money for that specifically. And then, one other thing that's going to come up this year that's been absent in the last two, at least two years because of COVID restrictions, is, and we'll be voting on it soon, is bringing Pike Day back to the fourth grade elementary school students, which is about a $1,000 cost, which would come out of that line item as well.
So, I have a question regarding the Firecracker event. So, if you didn't have the dunk, the dunk tank, how much money would the town save? Because we get dunks.
That was the best part.
Did you hear me, Mr. Smith?
I did hear you, but what, what cost the town we surpassed in fundraising for various groups?
Good answer. Not your first rodeo.
If we do bring it back, I will do my due diligence to find a bigger, more comfortable tank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More water.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? You said you had another question when I, I think I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. Nope, it's out of my mind. I'll, I'll ask you if I remember, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectment recommend account number 630, Parks and Recreation budget of $20,200.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is account number 690, Town Historian. It's my understanding that she's not available tonight, but it's level funding in the amount of $250. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I happily motion that we recommend account 690 at $250.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye. Historical Commission, I'm sorry you had to wait.
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
Two and a half, more than two and a half hours.
Makes Zoom look attractive, doesn't it?
No, I'm pretty tired of Zoom.
Oh, yeah, me, too. Nice to see you. Thank you for coming.
Good to be here. So.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, you're all set, Mike.
Oh, my God, yeah, I just had a panic attack.
I thought he was, like, no, you're all set.
Thank you.
We have, first, we entered a level-funded budget, but through our learning about GIS mapping, through our grant, part of the survey and planning grant, and our preservation consultant that we have this year, is we, the product includes the GIS mapping and a hard copy map. So, that's, we found money for that. Part of our, our budget is going to pay for that this year. The Preservation Consultant Stacy's going to put some money in, and Mike found some money for the balance of that. So, going into FY '23, we discovered that we would need an additional $600 to update the GIS mapping that'll be created this year. So, what it does is it creates a historic layer on the maps, and I've learned more about GIS mapping than I ever thought I would.
Or wanted to.
Or wanted to. Didn't know I needed to know. So, when, there's a drop-down menu, and it shows you, like, the property map, the zoning map, the wetlands, and I think there's a contour map. And then, the new layer will be a historic layer map, and each of the properties that has been documented will be on that map. And if I understood the consultant from CAI correctly, when you go under the property card, it'll also show up there that it's a historic building. So, that's what the extra $600 is for.
Dr. Z?
So, it will, and you may have said this, I apologize, it will show if it's a building that's been.
Documented.
Okay, documented and, like, accepted as a historical building?
All the inventory is doing, yes, it's documenting, saying that this property is a historic building.
Is it recognized with the Commonwealth?
It'll go on the MACRIS website.
Okay, nice. Thank you.
Yeah. And it also shows up on their map, Mass Mapper, it's another GIS mapping system, so it'll show up there, too.
Very nice. This is fantastic.
Will it also show Native American lands, like the Council Oak area or the Mon?
No, because that hasn't been documented through this grant round. See, that's, see, we had to pick, like, approximately 100 properties to be done in this survey and planning one. So, those are, she did 94 properties. Some of those are cemeteries. A lot of them are along Elm Street, Lower Four Corners, which is Main Street and Elm Street, down Main Street, Pleasant Street, some on Pine Street, so that those would appear. So, like, we also put in, so the reason why it's in FY '23, too, is because we also put in for another, to continue our community-wide survey, unfortunately, the state didn't give us the money, the 50% grant, but CPC has indicated that it's pending, they have a meeting tomorrow night, pending approval there to go to town meeting. So, that would be another approximately, I'd say, 94 properties that would be done. And the focus of that particular one is North Dyke and the Mount Home Finishing Company area. So, hopefully CPC will, I've gotten positive feedback, that'll pass tomorrow in time to be on the warrant, so that we can go to town meeting for approval. Then this GIS mapping would be in place, it's like dominoes, you know, in place so that, you know, those would be documented. My plan, as far as the Historical Commission goes, that this is an ongoing process, certainly, like you talked about, the Council Oak, that would be one that would have to be visited.
No, thank you.
Some of the properties are already on MACRIS, but they're not on the GIS mapping yet because they haven't been redone, updated, nor the tools to get them on that map.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
May I make one comment?
Yes.
So, it doesn't surprise me that they didn't, like, fund that next round, because it happens even with us, like, if you apply two years in a row.
Right, yeah.
But I'm excited that you all believe so much in this and know how important it is that you did go to the CPC, so I really appreciate that.
Oh, thank you.
And I think this is a really cool project.
It is.
It, it, it innovates so much. It innovates the veteran cemeteries. It, there's so much.
There's so much.
It's just a really cool project.
If I had thought about it, I would have brought some of the documents. I will bring them at some point in time. The drafts that Stacy has done, it's just absolutely amazing. And to your point about, you know, not getting back-to-back grants, I wasn't really surprised either. I was hopeful, but I figured, you know what? What are they going to say? No? If I don't ask, they're not going to even consider you. So, you always have to ask.
And the more you apply, they may just give it to you just so they don't have to see your name. Yeah, exactly.
Well, we knew there was a 50/50 chance of getting that grant.
Or 60/40, right?
Fantastic work, though. I really appreciate.
Yeah, I know, the commission works hard, you know, it's a good working group, so.
Ms. Gales is doing an excellent job. Historical Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on her budget, on the Commission's budget.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectment recommend account 691, Historical Commission, budget be at $1,600.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye also.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Great job, thank you.
Excellent work.
The next budget item is account number 710, Maturating Principal Long-Term Debt. This is less than level funding.
Yes. So, this is based on the debt, this, so, this in the, hold on a second. Yeah, this, and I believe, and we have Treasury Hathaway on the line as well, but this, both these numbers are based on, based on our debt scale. But this, both these numbers are based on, based on our debt schedule. We have for the police station and then the, I think, oh my, sorry, I'm screwing this. And then for the septic, the septic notes we have as well. Am I correct, Mary? Actually, Mary might have got bored. Oh, there's Mary.
Don't give up on us.
I'm trying. All right, but it is, the schedule.
I actually have a question.
My question is, how did we save that $1 from the previous?
And how can, how can we get it up?
Yeah. I'm joking. Dr. Z, you had a question?
I do. Mrs. Hathaway, for my own memory and for anyone who's still watching, every year at the special town meeting, we use free cash to make a bond payment for the police station. Can you please, for me, really for me and the public, delineate the difference between this $235,000 for the police station communications long term debt and the bond payment that we use free cash to pay every year?
That is the payment that we use, $235,000 for.
But I thought it was for 400, though. Am I getting the numbers mixed up? I thought it was for more than what's there. Sorry, Mr. Administrator. You can answer. I'm sorry.
So it's a $235,000, that's the principal. Then we add in the interest in the next, in the next budget. So the $235,000?
Ah!
Plus the, plus the interest comes out to, I want to say the number going into FY '23 is around $367,000.
Okay, that makes perfect sense.
And that is based on the level principal debt schedule because you can see here there is, in the, in debt service structuring, there's either level principal or level debt service. And we have a level principal, and we have a level principal, so that means as we pay off the interest, the interest goes down.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. So for you or for Mrs. Hathaway, maybe for you, Mr. Administrator, so do we put this in the budget just because we don't know if it will pass at town meeting? Or we may not have enough free cash?
I think that's it. We don't know whether or not we're going to have free cash.
Yeah, and we need to appropriate it, and this is how we appropriate it. But when it comes, and we have to appropriate it because we're required to, and we're required to based on, based on the bonding requirements that we have every year. So we appropriate it, but by, by the time before we, and also there's a debt exclusion for that as well, which we haven't even touched the debt exclusion on that for, which says a lot about our, really our fiscal diligence and fiscal conservatism. But in order to pay it, it has, it has to be appropriated through like our annual budget process, and this is how we appropriate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hathaway. Sorry.
Selectman Hall?
So is it more of a timing issue? Because you're putting it in the budget, yet you're voting to pay it out of free cash?
Yes.
So are you, in essence, just carrying money over from the budget into free cash? Earmarked for that? Because?
Arguably, yes, but there's no guarantee that that free cash is ever going to be there.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, going into where we are this fiscal year in FY '22, and, oh, you know, we can see where we're at and I, and we talked about last week that we, oh, you know, are significantly drawbacking our revenues based on current trends. So I'm expecting, like at this point, a much more limited free cash number for our next, based on our FY '22 closeout. The only thing that held our free cash number up the prior two fiscal years is the fact that we had COVID spending freezes like for the better part of the last two fiscal years. That's the only thing that helped us. So there's nothing really guaranteeing that we're going to have to have the free cash. So that's why in addition to, like we have an annual appropriation process, like as this, where based on, based on the borrowing requirements, we need to fund the debt services way. But also, like again, oh, you know, like, and we've all known the possibility over these last five years, as we, as we have funded that out of free cash, we knew that there could be the day, would be the year, like where that might actually not be possible.
Now, following along what happened at the last town meeting, what happens if the voters decide not to support this? How do we pay that?
So like we're raising to appropriate through the budget process now.
The money is in the budget.
Yeah, and the revenues to support this expense are in the budget as well.
I think what, may I?
Sure.
I think what Selectman Hall is asking is, what if theoretically voters did not support this line? And then also did not support like the special article?
Right.
Later on in the year? I know that's like a perfect storm, but I think that is what you were getting at.
This is, very respectfully, this is something we need to fund.
I understand that.
I also understand that that was said at town meeting with the $8,000 for the Board of Assessors, and look how that blew up.
So when, so when we went out for the police station bond, and I say we, but the town, when the town went out for the police station borrowing in 2018, I believe it was, we, we put the town's full faith and credit into that process.
Correct.
Oh, you know, like in the commitment, I'll buy the town to debt exclude that cost as well. That also backed that up. So really what, yeah, the full, the full faith and credit of the town would really be at stake at that point.
Understood.
If hypothetically that would ever happen.
But it could, to answer the question.
Yes, it could.
Let's hope not.
Hope it never does.
Understood. No, I understand.
Did I miss anything, Mary? Like, I'm sorry. I completely went into your lane, Mary, but.
Stay in your lane.
Just like I credit maybe, like, hey, you know, we need to pay that, you know?
Yes.
And we remember, Mrs. Hathaway, you remember how, and I think you were here as well, Selectman, Pacheco, Mr. Chairman. You remember how we worked with the FinCom before any of that even happened to prepare the financial statement? And that, I believe, saved us like one payment. And so there has been a lot of work done to make this project and save as much money as we could in terms of having a good credit rating. Because we all know, and this would be part of the explanation, I think, is that if we were to go back on our word as a town to what the town administrator is saying, that would affect our credit rating. It would certainly affect our ability to get a good competitive rate on the next capital project if needed. Is all that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
So it would make it more expensive in the long run.
Sure.
We want to keep our good rating.
Understood.
No, thank you.
Then on top of that, and I'm not sure exactly how it would work, but I would expect and anticipate some type of foreclosure process to kick the police department out of the police department building because we, we own that?
Correct.
But the lines show that building property is also owned by the?
Bond?
By the bond company.
It's not paid off, correct?
So?
Anything. Repo man shows up.
Yes.
Correct. We don't want to do that.
I don't want to be around to tell them to move them back to trailers and lose the animal.
Yeah, we're moving the animal shelter back. No, 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 no. But, but to Selectman Hall's point, that is a fair question. And so I appreciate that because these are real things that we, the town may have to confront in the future for maybe other projects. So having that understanding and explanation upfront is really helpful, I think.
Yeah, like, I mean, we have, we have very, so we are very, very limited, in my opinion, very, very limited areas, like in discretionary funding or discretionary expenditures in the town budget, especially after you back out the 53% of our budget that goes directly to educational costs. And then you back out, and then you back out, and then you back out debt service, or, you know, like in other contractually required provisions. Oh, you know, that part of the pie that we, yeah, that we actually have, oh, you're more of a say, like, we have, oh, we have, and our residents have a say on the whole thing, obviously. But when, when you take out the things like this that, oh, like are backed up by very strict requirements, it's actually, it's actually a much more smaller piece of the pie than?
Understood.
I think a lot of people understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hathaway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for going into your turf.
He's going to stay in his lane. Oh, he's known for this.
No, 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 Mary.
I'll entertain a motion on account number 710.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 710 in the amount of $241,668 even.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico was an aye. Interest on long term debt, this is less than level funding. As I pointed out before, that the interest on the principal goes down every year. So it's down $11,750.
Sold. Mr. Chairman, if you are entertaining motions?
Yes, I am.
I recommend, excuse me, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend account 751 in the amount of $132,925 even.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico was an aye also. Do we even have to vote on account number 752?
We do.
Yes, I believe we keep it open just in case there is something, like where we need any type of revenue with tax anticipation note that we have a place to transfer it into. So, yeah, just, I would, oh, jeez, I forget.
So if we don't vote on?
Certain wording last year, and I forget exactly what it was.
So if we don't vote on it, we don't have an account?
No, it just wouldn't be funded. Do you want to take?
Well, it's not being funded, right?
Well, true. Do you want to take this one under advisement till next?
Yeah, that's what you know, specific language that we used last year to keep it, to keep everything open.
Better we get this one right, so I'm with you. Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions, I motion that the Board of Selectmen take account 752 under advisement to next week until we have the correct wording.
Second.
We're putting a lot of stuff on next week.
That's okay.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico was an aye. The next agenda budget item is account number 911, Retirement and Pension. This is an increase, which is understandable, I guess.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And I, I support this, Mrs. Hathaway or Town Administrator Mullin. My question is, is that typical for only a 0.85% increase for retirement from the prior year? It looks like it was much more in past years. So is, I guess, is this an anomaly this year, Mrs. Hathaway?
I'm not sure. I know that we, I know that, this is the appropriation, I don't know how they figure their figures, but?
Oh, it's based on that, okay.
We do pay it once a year instead of semi annual, and we do save like $15,000 by doing that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
All right. I'm definitely supporting it. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. Selectman Hall?
Does the number of people retiring, can that increase the number as well?
No, because those people who are retiring have paid into it all along.
Okay.
So, oh, yeah, like, and I'm not, yeah, like, this is something that, this is something completely in Mary's realm. But like I, like I do know, like I do know that county retirement systems have schedules. Oh, yeah, where they, where they have, where they have a schedule to take them to full funding by a certain year.
Okay.
So where we are here in going into FY '23, that could really represent where we are in that schedule.
I understand. No, thank you. That makes a lot of sense. Appreciate it.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Department 911 Retirement and Pension contributions of $897,957.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campa Chico was an aye. Next account number's budget item is 914, Group Health Insurance. And we're pleasantly pleased that it only increased by 1% if I remember correctly. Any questions on this? Selectman Hall?
Yes, why the significant increase?
I always have to add a couple of plans to the budget because I never know if it's coming on or off. So it is only 1%, which is a great rate, I thought. But I do have to add because you never know that someone's going to lose their insurance. So I have to make sure there's enough money in that plan.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So any surplus goes into free cash at the end? Is that correct?
Or lots of times if a department needs some money, they have to transfer from that account. At the end of the year.
Just as an example, last week, we had an employee with a life changing event in their family. Oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, a life changing event is just really like a term, like in the health insurance industry, that allows, that allows that employee and or their family to come on, to come on our insurance mid-year without having to wait for the open enrollment process. Yeah, yeah, like in, at the Treasurer Hathaway's point, oh, you know, that, oh, you know, that, that employee up to the event was not on our insurance at all. And then that employee, based on that life changing event, opted into a family plan. Like overnight, we had a more than $20,000 increase in premium based on the annualized rate of a family plan.
Thank you.
So that's why it's helpful, that's why it's helpful to Mary's point to have a buffer there. Like, we never know, and our employees don't know to their credit, oh, you know, what is going to happen and drive them to, oh, you know, have any life changing events, so to speak, during the fiscal year.
And just to piggyback off that, it's not just, it's not just additions. You can also take people off for certain life events as well. So it kind of, sometimes it can average out, but I do agree. It's probably extremely hard to predict when that would happen. It's impossible. You cannot predict that. I think that's it for me.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend account number 914, Group Health Insurance, at the budget request of $1,312,436.25.
Second.
Any discussion?
May I?
Yes.
May I? Mrs. Hathaway?
Yes.
And I know this is just sort of anecdotal, so I know you don't probably have this answer in front of you, but just in your opinion or in your experience, what you've seen the last few years, since the Board of Selectmen agreed to change the contribution for retiree medical to a 75-25 split, have we seen more retirees and pre-retirees wanting to keep the town insurance versus like when they become Medicare eligible, for example?
Well, as you know, Medicare is the primary. Well, as you know, Medicare is the primary, and if they're eligible, the town's is the secondary. So they do, it's such a great benefit
Gotcha.
for the employees. So, yes, they stay with us on the town.
That makes sense. So it make, so the town's medical coverage will pick up things that Medicare doesn't cover, correct? Okay, so they coordinate. Thank you. I appreciate that. No further questions.
I'll call for a vote. We already have a motion, right?
Yes.
Selectman Hall?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico was an aye also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda items, 910, account number 915, Group Life Insurance.
No questions from me.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 915 in the amount of $950.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico was an aye. Employer contributions, account number 916.
I don't have any questions on this one.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend account 916 in the amount of $84,000.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico was an aye. OPEP, account number 919. This is level funding, funded. Any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend account number 919, OPEP, for the sum of $35,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico was an aye. That takes care of this week's budgetary items.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mrs. Hathaway and Mrs. Vining.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Janelle, too.
You're welcome.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
You're welcome.
What, did we just wake somebody up?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to approve of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of March 9, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say ayes?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico was an aye. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the following warrants, all dated March 16, 2022, 37A-22 in the amount of $103,618.31, and 37B-22 in the amount of $79,527.14.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Dr. Z?
Aye.
Let's shake it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Aye.
Making sure I'm still awake.
Public input, public input.
No.
How'd we do tonight, Mr. Marvel? Could have done better, right? Thank you, sir. All right. Don't yell at me in the parking lot.
There was a few yawns.
Okay, all right. We'll give them that. Okay, not me that early, but I understand your pain.
No public input. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, and we will not be coming back out to an open meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. You declare?
I declare.
A, Dayton Permanent Firefighters Association Local 4332, B, Dayton Police Officers Mass Cop Local 306, and, number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid in requirements, executive session minutes, approval of the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting minutes of March 9, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campachico was an aye.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is March 23. Please have a safe St. Patrick's Day. Enjoy.
Thank you, everybody.
See you.
Thank you.